Would anyone like something pulled from consent? Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. F-12.
F-12. Anything else from consent? All right. Seeing nothing else, may I have a motion to approve consent less F-12?
Make a motion to approve consent less F-12.
All right. A motion from Commissioner Pritchett. I'll go ahead and second it. To approve consent less F-12. All in favor of approving consent less F-12? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None passes unanimously. All right. Let's go to F-12. Commissioner Tabia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is a request from a constitutional office in the amount of $2,730, which would come from the county's general fund. It also would lead to an additional $18,200 in state tax revenue. In a recent Florida State article, the 28th of February, the supervisor said he's confident in paper ballot system and brevard. Goes on to say, quote, "The important thing for voters to remember is you can't hack paper." Commissioner Pritchett mentioned at Thursday's meeting that it is important for us to remember that while the sheriff's request a critical need declaration, other constitutional officers have asked for even more revenue. She pointed out last year that the supervisor of elections saw an increase of $1.5 million in her budget. I also listened to Commissioner Loeb point out that he would support any request for constitutional officers for a line item budget during a town hall with the clerk of the court, Scott Ellis, about five weeks ago. While I am willing to support the request such as this from a constitutional officer, I will do so for those that are willing to commit through an MOU that they will provide the budget to the county detailed in the sub-object level before it is required for us to vote on. This would be less information than is available to us from the budget office and department directors from the ones that we supervise. So I would have a motion to request staff to develop an MOU which would obligate the supervisor election to provide a line item budget to the county and approve this once that MOU was ratified, Mr. Chair.
I'll go ahead and second it. Any discussion? Commissioner Pritchett?
It might be wise to put a dollar amount on it. Maybe a threshold amount.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Supervisor has asked for $2,730. So there is a dollar amount on it.
Do you want to do this moving forward into the future with all of the constitutional offices? I thought you had just said that, sir.
No. Listen, I'm certain, Mr. Chair.
Please.
I'm certainly more than willing to do it. This was only triggered by the—
Just at one time?
Well, I mean, we only need one. I only need one budget that is that way. But this was only triggered because there was a request from the supervisor for the $2,730. If we want to request this for all constitutional officers, that's a-okay. But you had mentioned that we had provided a million and a half more dollars to this office, though about, from my understanding, $175,000 had been returned. But that's a net of $1.3 million more than the previous year. So there is an ask for an additional $2,730, which I think would be fair to provide should we get a sub-object level budget. So an MOU would obligate that.
I don't mind. It's just a change in the current year budget, so we have to make an adjustment to it. But she did ask for an increase in the budget, but they were required now to do bilingual ballots, and they were mandated to security. So it's almost something she didn't have a lot of control over. So I don't mind doing that. It's a little bit more paperwork for Ms. Scott, but I'm sure she won't mind. So I'm fine.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. Yeah, I have mixed feelings. I kind of think that we're springing this on a constitutional officer. We've never done that before. But I don't have a problem finding out exactly what it is for, or—I understand that, but—
Oh. How about if we hear from the supervisor of elections? Come on down.
If you saw the footwear behind the bias here—
I'd feel right at home.
You'd be well dressed.
Well, I wanted to walk over in case any of you had questions. I caught the end of it. I wasn't in front of the TV. Obviously, when we get grant money, it is required that the county matches it, or we cannot get it. So the state tells us what the federal grant money match is. So that's how it works. That's the reason it has to be asked for as far as a line item budget. If it is something having to do with cybersecurity—I mean, I can tell you that it's cybersecurity-related, but I can't give you the details of what particular piece of equipment it's going to buy or what it's being used for, because that is part of our protection, cybersecurity protections over it. And Commissioner, I heard you mention about the increase in the budget this year of $1 million. And obviously, an election—more elections cost more money, and this is the only year that we have three elections in one year, and it's a little over $1 million per election countywide. We are the 10th largest county and the third-largest state in the nation. So it happens every four years that it's up $1 million. It's not because my office is spending more money or taking on more costs. It's because I have another election to conduct. So that is something that happens every time, but I'll be glad to answer questions about that or any other questions you may have.
Madam Supervisor, just before I turn it over to Commissioner Tabia, would you have any opposition to meeting with commissioners one-on-one with respect to items that you otherwise might have security concerns releasing?
That'd be absolutely fine.
Thank you. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you. And I probably did a poor job asking. It wasn't on where the $2,730 or even the $1,820 was going. This was a full sub-object level of the entire budget. And Commissioner Pritchett had pointed this out, that when the sheriff asks for money, his increase was a smaller percentage than the overall budget once the general fund was portioned in. It was $1 million and a half, to be clear. So there is quite a bit of difference between $1 million and $1 million and a half, though you did return a little over $175,000. So it was about $1.3 million of a net increase. And I'm sure you're spending it wisely and efficiently, and that's why I don't know why you would have any trouble providing the board as well as the public with a sub-object level, the same level of scrutiny that all of the members here and all the departments provide to us, so we can make those decisions. So again, it's not on the $2,730. This would be your full—this would be a sub-object level on your full budget, which would be less actual scrutiny than the one that our budget office provides us with.
Well, I think as far as scrutiny, I'm not concerned about that. I mean, up until a couple of years ago, my entire budget was run, as you know, and I was the only constitutional—I believe that my entire budget was run through the counties. So every bill, every everything was paid through the county and done. So my office has been very transparent since day one. And as far as costs associated, I just provided, I believe, an estimate to the county manager or county attorney for what a potential special election would cost if the board decided to move forward with one. So I mean, I have a very good dollar amount of what a countywide election costs in this county. And when costs go up associated with elections, as you know from being in the legislature, Commissioner, you know, when things are mandated down from the state and the federal government regarding elections—and there have been a lot of mandates since 2000—we continue to see those increases. Unlike the sheriff's budget, my budget is cyclical, and it goes down and it goes up depending on how many elections I have and what the mandates are from the state and the federal government.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
Yeah, I think we're on the same page. I think that, you know, all I was asking for—I don't think you're hiding anything, just a budget that was a little more on par with the one that our budget office provides to the level of scrutiny. And I'm sure you'd have no trouble—
I'll be glad to do it if everybody does it.
Listen, I—you know, Commissioner Loeb mentioned it, brought it up. I think it's a good idea, and I'm not picking you out. I just saw this come up. Asked for a grant match at $2,730, and I thought, what a wonderful way to start it out.
Well, I just want to mention that without those grant matches, we cannot pull down those federal dollars, and brevard will lose out on them.
Commissioner Pritchett?
And if you don't get the grant dollars, that means you're going to need more of the general fund—
Correct.
—come election season. Ms. Hayes, I know we've talked about this in the past, but as far as the constitutional offices, we really don't go through their budget. They have another criteria they go through. We just do the approval on the amount they put through, and we're mandated to fund their budgets, correct?
They provide their budgets in accordance with Florida statute, and each one has different Florida statutes that they follow. And so what we receive from the constitutional officers in terms of their budget, it is grouped, kind of summarized, so we know their compensation and benefit amount, operating capital, and then transfers and things like that. So it's really summarized what we receive from them.
We don't typically speak to your budget and tell you where you need to spend money and where you don't, because you're your own entity under another guidelines of legalities of how you have to bring forth your budget. And so, you know, you made a statement a minute ago, "If all the others do, so will I." And I'm not going to single you out until the state of Florida makes changes with that. And I don't know that you necessarily should be under me. You know, I don't think that the commission should micromanage every other constitutional office that's elected. So I'm not going to support this. I'm going to—I'm going to support putting through your request, because it's going to come out of the general fund later. And the more we've talked about it, I'm just not going to single you out for $2,000 when you're getting $18 from the state.
Just real briefly, a couple of things. First, with respect to the grant, is there a particular deadline that's coming up? Because if there is, I'm happy just to approve the funding so that you don't have the issue.
I don't have it right in front of me, Mr. Chairman. I'd have to grab and see what our deadline is to get it back over. My finance director's across the hall. I can get that for you.
I'm not going to make you run back and forth and do that. I'm going to approve the money tonight.
I've got my tennis shoes on, but go ahead.
Well, that is handy. But, you know, my thought is more for looking forward. I'm not expecting any constitutional office to tell me, you know, which brand of paper they buy, or whether it's 24-pound bond or 20. I don't care. I'm not going to manage anyone to that level. Same thing, if you want a rollerball versus a ballpoint, you know, that's your choice. I'm not looking to scrutinize anything. But if there is a legitimate request, whether it's from Commissioner Tabia or some member of the public, to get additional detail—I'm supportive of folks having access to anything that they would reasonably be able to make use of. Now, that doesn't include your cybersecurity initiatives. I get that. I've had discussions with IT here and understand very well why that shouldn't be discussed in a manner that broadcasts it beyond what's necessary. But, you know, that said, I think, you know, ideally, if the world were perfect—which it's certainly not—we'd have everyone on the same accounting system, everyone would be on SAP or something else. I don't think that's going to happen realistically. I don't think that's going to happen. But what I would like—
But we were, Mr. Chairman—and not to interrupt—
Yeah, please.
The elections office was for the first nine, 10 years that I was elected. So we haven't seen huge increases in the budget of the elections office other than when we have an extra election to conduct. So I mean, historically, the commission and everybody in the county that has done accounts payable has seen all my invoices, has seen what my costs are. You know, I'm very proud of how low I have kept our costs for anything that's certainly with under my control. Again, there are things that aren't, and, you know, while I happen to be standing here that I didn't plan on doing, because I went and had tennis shoes on, I'd have lipstick on. But if—it's been very long days. We're on, you know, our ninth or 10th day in a row of working 12-hour days. But one of the things that, while I'm here, that I do want to mention that is a potential impact, and I know you guys know this from your perspective, but this is coming fast and furious for us right now, is the potential impact of the coronavirus on election costs. And the governor released an executive order last night waiving statutes and rules and any orders that would prevent conducting elections or anything in an emergency fashion that we would have to do. We are very closely monitoring, you know, any kind of shortage in our poll workers who decide not to work to be exposed. Look, we have 437,000 voters that we put through in a very short amount of time. It's a lot of hands touching a lot of paper. We are—and if you see budget increase in—for me right now, it's in Purell and hand sanitizer, because we touch a lot of stuff that comes from the public. And I'd like to tell you that all ballots come through pristine. But for anyone that's ever served on the canvassing board, and Commissioner Smith is doing that right now, we say no matter what comes back on them, it's coffee. But trust me, you don't probably want to know how some of those come back. But in case we get to a situation where the governor should order a mail ballot, a full mail ballot election, or change statute, or so we have to do it—I mean, we are in a very fluid situation, as our entire country is right now. And I know that you're looking on this, I'm sure, at many levels, but I'd be remiss, since I have your for a moment, to stand here to say that we are certainly monitoring that with an election a week away from today. And one of the things that they contacted us about today is currently two of our 109 polling locations are in assisted living facilities, and they are looking at removing us from assisted living facilities, because those are high-risk populations and who may not want external public coming in. So we may lose one of them a week before the election. So I really hope that we can reach out and maybe use Space Coast TV if we're in that situation to try and alert our voters of a last-minute change.
I appreciate it. And, you know, with respect to Commissioner Tabia's motion, although I did second, and I'm not planning on supporting it at this point, I'm not going to withdraw the second. I think if he'd like to have a vote, he's entitled to that. But that said, I would like to sit down with you when things calm down a little bit—
Absolutely.
Obviously, not this week.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm not going to do that to you. But if we can achieve his ends without putting you in a bad spot where we have more information readily accessible to him and to other members of the public that may want it, I think that's a good goal. But I don't know, with everything going on, with there being uncertainty as to what the deadline is for the grant funding, I'm not going to put you in a position like that at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Tabia?
Mr. Chair, I'll pull it, I think, but I want to be very clear that constitutional offices don't dictate to us. We are the body that collects and collects the resources. And when a constitutional officer says—and I think it's a very fair request, if one does it, then I'll do it. I don't want to be dictated, and I don't think we should be dictated that way. So I've got no problem doing it across the board if we decide to go in that direction. But, you know, I'm going to—I'm going to pull this. I'm not going to vote for this, because I honestly believe if transparency is the best way to go, and providing a sub-object level is probably the highest level of transparency, not only to us, but—and I'm sure any constitutional officer will meet with us—but I think that the public and everyone deserves the exact same level of detail that we have. So I appreciate the supervisor coming here. I appreciate the work that her and her office does and the fluid nature of all this stuff. But I don't think that that should come at the expense of transparency.
And I appreciate that. And I would generally echo your sentiments with the one exception being that if publicizing something that there exists specific statutory exemptions for, because the publication of those items would increase the vulnerability and highlight some vulnerability, I don't know that that's something that's appropriate to disseminate widely. You know, she mentioned up here she's happy to have one-on-ones with folks up here if there's a concern about whether the money is appropriately spent, so that you can be apprised as to what the expense may be. But just like I don't need to know the nuclear launch codes, I don't need to know certain pieces of information that really could present a security risk. With that said, you've withdrawn your motion. I'll go ahead and move to approve this with that—I guess with the understanding as well that I will have a conversation with Supervisor Scott once the current round of elections is through, to hopefully get you a little bit more of what you're looking for. Commissioners, Nardi?
Yeah. This item, although Commissioner Tabia talked about modifying it, this item is specific to the grant anyway. I mean, so—and I think, aside from her explaining it, it's pretty cut and dry on what she requires or what the grant requires is her to request it from the board. So as far as, you know, whether or not, as commissioners, we need and should see the line item budget, perhaps that's something to discuss as a separate issue, you know, altogether.
And I'll just put it out there so that there's no ambiguity. I would be in favor of increasing transparency across the board with all the constitutionals. Now, that doesn't mean increasing it to the point that it's prohibitively expensive and burdensome for them to produce, where we're asking them, well, which brand pen? And is it the seven-tenths of a millimeter or the five-tenths? And is it Fuchsia or is it blue? I don't want to do that to them, because I don't feel like interfering with their operations to that extent. And frankly, I don't think any of us or all of us combined, even if we were to split it up five ways, would have enough time, even if we did nothing else but go through constitutional budgets, to go through literally every purchase and every transaction that they conduct. Commissioner Pritchett?
I don't think we have that authority, but I think if we spend some time with Jill and find out what our role is with this, I think if the public wants, they can petition them for public records requests. I know there's been some heartburn with it before. I think what we do is we kind of look and see if we think something's out of whack. We say, no, it's challenged with the state, and we could win or lose that suit as far as whether or not we supply their budget. But I think maybe figure out what it is we have the authority to do and maybe kind of stick within those guidelines with it. But it's tough. They're their own elected entities, and—
You've got the figurative gavel now, since I made the motion on this one.
Oh, thank you. And I'd like to have a second on Commissioner Loeb's motion.
All second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
What?
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Yeah, I was just going to exactly sort of echo what you said. I mean, we're accountable to our voters like they're accountable to theirs. They're constitutionally elected officials as well. So we have to recognize that, respect that, and it's our job, perhaps, to scrutinize their budgets if we don't agree with them, if we're ultimately the one that funds them and approves them. So I mean, I'm sure you guys met—when you requested to meet with different constitutional offices, they met with you, correct?
Oh, yeah. And if there was something crazy, you know, we're going to challenge it, you know? But as far as—we don't put their budget together. We don't really scrutinize it. But we have—we're the ones that's supposed to be a final overview of whether we think that something's kind of out of line or not.
I've got a pretty detailed budget, at least from the sheriff's.
I didn't have any problems asking.
And not only that, his budget director also came to answer my questions—
Yeah.
—more than one meeting. So I know that they're accessible. I know if I have questions. If it looks like somebody's hiding something, then obviously, we should have a problem with that. But I haven't seen that thus far. And again, they're all so elected and accountable, just like we are.
And I run statistics with what goes on in other communities per capita, and it seems to fall within those guidelines. Or actually, they're doing a little bit better, so—
Can I jump on to—
Please, sir.
Yeah. You know, just lastly, with respect to that, all these folks whose budgets we're talking about run for election. If you think they're hiding something, you're certainly welcome to factor that into how you vote. I don't think anyone's hiding anything, because I've gotten every bit of information I've ever asked for from any of the constitutional officers. But if the overwhelming majority of the public continues to reelect them, I take that, at least in part, as a sign that they approve of what they're producing and the level of transparency that they're providing. So if you don't agree with that, take it to the ballot box. And I don't—I don't mean to single out any of the constitutional officers. I mean all of them.
I'd like to call the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Gavel back to you.
All right. So we will move along to H1. Staff, if you could give us the bare minimum statutory requirement that we have for introducing this, so that we can keep the moving rolling, the meeting moving. I can't speak tonight. I apologize. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, you still have public comment?
Oh, thank you. Yes, public comment. Can't skip that. Shucks, you caught me. No, it's Public Comment Section G is in Gulf. We have five speakers. First up, we'll have Charles Tovey from Melbourne. Then we'll have Peter Carnasale from Melbourne. Then Terry Friedlander from Melbourne. John Windsor from Melbourne. And Sandra Sullivan from South Patrick Shores, in that order. Welcome back, sir.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Arbors Road, Melbourne. On my card, it's about the lagoon, and this is related, that Osceola and another—I think it's Lake County—they've adopted an environmental legal voice for the environment, and it's accepted. And I think we should follow along. That way, our environment has a voice of its own, instead of other people not speaking for it or for speaking for it. Also about the trees, that they do provide hurricane buffer from the wind and the rain and safety and—and the word—I don't mean to be arrogant, and that's not my intention about anything—but the pedestrian law, they do have a law that requires a pedestrian to stop and look. And a lot of pedestrians don't do that, and they think they're in the right just because they're walking. They're not, and they need to recognize the pedestrian law. As well as the garbage and waste management, we have elderly people that need pick up twice a week, and we also have children that, for safety reasons, it would be better to have it twice a week instead of once a week. And then on the lagoon, if you—if you Google why you put salt in pasta, you'll get the response that it makes the water, boiling water, hotter, actually increases the temperature of boiling. So does it with our lagoon. So any kind of extra and plus, it's going to throw off the balance of the lagoon, and that's part of the problem, and I'll reveal that later on, not today. And I am wearing my moccasins, but I came home a few weeks ago, and there is a water moccasin on my front porch walkway. And no, I did not kill it. It has a right to live. And why is it there? Because the—all the local environment's being destroyed and taken away from the organisms. I also wanted to state that the possible part of the Wickham Lakes and our lagoon, there's a chain of lakes—or used to be a chain of lakes—from Otter Creek south to Wickham Lake. And that's been disturbed and interrupted and filled in, so there are no more chain of lakes. And that might have partial thing to do with our lagoon problem. Oh, that's all fixed. There's not a problem. Forty. Anyways, the algae bloom. I'll touch on that on another subject. They gave the months when it's most prevalent, and I'll give you the reasons why. Thank you for your time, and don't forget, wash your hands, and echinacea is a good holistic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well timed. All right, Peter. Welcome back, sir.
Good evening.
Evening.
Obviously, it's a little bit—obviously, it's a little bit late today. However, I've still got my basic speech slash complaint, or whatever you want to call it. I'm Peter Carnasale. I'm from 1910 Independence Avenue. I represent myself. We still have the need for a right-hand turn lane into the Indian River Colony Club when heading east on Viera Boulevard. And I'll get partially into what was just said, in that there are bicyclists, pedestrians, and golf carts that are not visible from the street until you begin to turn. And that's part of the reason why the people have to slow down to like 10 miles an hour. Okay? They do not stop. All right? So as you come around, if there's a bicyclist, or somebody walking, or if there's a golf cart that's there, you're going to wind up smashing into that unless you come to a full stop. And if you're doing 20, 30 miles an hour as you're coming around the bend, you won't be able to. All right? Now we move on to basically both Heron's Island and I R C C exits onto Viera Boulevard at the same point. Okay? On the same corner. It does need a traffic light in general because of the crossover. And Faith Lutheran Church is also affected by that, because there is a path, pathway for the cars to travel that's parallel to Viera Boulevard between Lutheran Church and the Heron's Landing. So therefore, they would be able to use that path to get to that corner, which is the light. So it's not just one entity, it's three entities that would be taking advantage of that light. And people were still wondering about what the wiring was that was going along Viera Boulevard. And that basically has nothing to do with anything in terms of lights or in terms of electrical systems. It is basically fiber optics. Okay? I talked to the people that were— I talked to the people that were actually laying it, okay? All right? And as a result, basically, it's for speed and availability of the internet. So, for the people that were thinking that that was related to something that related to the county, it does not, all right? And I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out and thank you for your service, sir. Terry Friedlander? Thanks to everyone for patiently waiting. I know this meeting's been running a little longer than many have hoped.
Good evening. My name is Terry Friedlander of 3236 Peninsula Circle in Melbourne, in the subdivision of Grand Haven, which is off the Pinida Extension. I have a confession to make. I'm not a native Floridian, in case you can't tell. My husband and I grew up in New York. For years, I tried selling him on Florida Space Coast. Finally, in 2004, we built a home in Grand Haven. What amazing growth we've experienced in this time. Back in 2004, you all probably remember, the Pinida Extension was a dead end. Today, we have two bustling lanes racing in each direction and more traffic than we ever imagined. In 2010, I became one of the founding members of the Pinida Safety Committee. I'm here on behalf of that committee to describe some of the major accidents and request a detailed traffic study to be done on the Pinida Extension. Perhaps one of the most frightening things to witness are school buses being rear-ended. In 2012, we witnessed a school bus rear-ended on the Pinida Extension, pretty serious. And then, five years later, the exact same thing in March of 2017. So, again, there were serious injuries and the children were being attended to, and it was a big problem. So, according to the statistics, it could be time again for another one of these serious accidents. Sadly, there are frequent accidents near the park on Estuary Drive, and especially at my intersection at Peninsula Circle. Cars and trucks are totaled on almost a weekly basis. Whether the reason is speeding or distracted drivers, there needs to be change. The only way to effect change is to work together with the county agencies and with our elected officials. Already by our joint efforts with John Denninghoff and Commissioners Bowlin and Smith, we have two flashing signals along the Pinida to remind motorists the speed limit is 45, not 75. Sadly, that's what many are traveling at. We have wildlife safety fence to try to keep turtles and sandhill cranes from crossing the road. And at our request, a traffic study was performed in October of 2012 by the Public Works Department. Today, that data is meaningless. We need another traffic study on the Pinida now to verify the speeding dilemma and to verify the drastic increase in vehicle usage over the last eight years. We've been in contact with Carina Gum for two years now without any real result. We believe the accidents on the roadway are too frequent and a traffic light may even be warranted for safety. Our common goal is to prevent serious injury for our children and motorists and to avoid potential deaths. Please schedule this long-promised traffic study on the Pinida as soon as possible. We would like to begin to secure funding for a new traffic light and the intersection of Peninsula Circle and Fringtree. And I'd like to thank you for listening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have John Windsor from Melbourne.
Wave comment, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, just for the record, he's waved comment. And last up, under Item G is in Gulf, Sandra Sullivan from South Patrick Shores. Threw me off. Normally, you're sitting over there. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so I want to talk about the Inshore Reef. So, from this article, for 16 years, it was not, it didn't happen because of the federal government protects offshore kohina rock outcroppings. I'm gonna just show, this is a, put out by floridaocean.org. It says, "Threats to species protected by state law, threatened by humans and dogs by walking on the rocks and crushing the tubes. Beach nourishment efforts can cover and kill colonies." Particularly that last sentence. So, a quote from one of the documents regarding the permitting, "The abundance of the hard bottom decreases significantly from north to south along the project area." That's a key phrase, I'm gonna say that again. "The abundance of the hard bottom decreases significantly from north to south with the highest concentration between R74 and R82." There's a map in the report, and the 74 to 82 isn't even on the map. That area is from Patrick Air Force Base to High Tower, and that, there are no offshore mitigating reefs on the most dense part of the reef. And as I read, as you go further south, there significantly decreases. That's a key point because where did they put the artificial reef? They put the artificial reef from Pelican down 8.2 miles. There's only one on Pelican, which is, well, from Patrick Air Force Base to High Tower is 5.4 miles, right? Then you go another 1.9 miles to Pelican. That's area of densest to then dense, and then from, as you go down, it gets less and less. So, is it any surprise, when you read the mitigation report, that they don't find worm rock here on where the artificial reef is? And so, here's a picture of what the macro algae looks like on that, on the actual reef. And here's a picture of what the artificial reef looks like. The report doesn't show any macro algae. What it says is, "The artificial reef survey did not reveal the presence of worm rock at that time," okay? And it says, "Worm rock is capable of colonizing artificial reefs, but conditions must coincide with larval availability." We're about to bury that, so that larval's gonna be largely taken away. And then, the last point I wanted to just make is this is a very important habitat to the green sea turtle, which is endangered. And as the previous speaker said, that seagrasses on the lagoon are dying and that is polluted water-causing disease. So, that habitat out on that reef is all the more critical. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And just a brief comment, Ms. Sullivan. I've not forgotten about you. I told Ms. Sullivan previously that I was planning on going and diving some of the reefs when the seas and the weather permit. I just have not had a chance to get to it at this point. It's something that's still on the radar. I don't want you to think that it was a promise I don't intend to keep or anything of the sort.
I'm incredibly excited that you would even consider to do it, and I'm very, very grateful. Thank you.
I'm more than considering it. And just as a disclaimer, it's not gonna involve any county commission resources, so don't think I'm having the county pay for a scuba trip, that's not the case. That's it for public comments. So, now, Jim, we can move on to H. You think I'm good now? All right. I've gotten his blessing, so we'll move on to H is in Hotel One. And staff, if I could have you give us the minimum introduction necessary?
Yes, sir. It's a, this is a petition to vacate public utility easements along the common lot line between lots 17 and 18. This is in the Barefoot Bay Unit 1 subdivision, and this will allow the owner of both lots to expand their, a deck and a garage. We've received no objections.
Perfect. Motion, maybe? All right, motion from Commissioner Tabia. I'll go ahead and second it. Oh, Commissioner Smith beat me to the second. Commissioner Smith will second it. All in favor of approving it? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Perfect. We're gonna move on to I-1, which is the T D T, pardon me, the Tourist Development Council Sports Grant. This is the item that was continued out as Commissioner Isnardi was sick and couldn't be here for the last meeting in which this was calendared. So, I guess we could have either Commissioner Isnardi offer up her thoughts, or we could have staff address it. What's your preference?
You ask them?
Yeah.
I think I sort of addressed it a little bit at the last zoning meeting, so, I mean, I don't mind if staff wants to present it again or...
If it's not necessary.
I mean, I know what the item's about, and we probably have some cards on it, so...
All right. We do on I-2, we do not on I-1. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just this last Thursday, you said, quote, "Taxpayers shouldn't have their money confiscated from the government and distributed to the charity of that government's choosing." I couldn't agree with you anymore. Two of these five organizations in here are just that, American Cancer Society and the Eastern Surfing Association. But I think what is even worse is a couple of these are for-profit. That's Ron John Beach and Board Fest, Softball Magazine, Space Coast, Superboats. Two of these events took place since the last time we discussed them, raising the question of is money really necessary to market the county at all if, or we're just artificially padding profits? So, with your indulgence, Mr. Chair, may I please ask? Mr. Cranis, when it came up last time, you mentioned the argument that these organizations may not come back next year if they're not adequately reimbursed. My question is this, have you received or did you receive any emails, text messages, phone calls from the Softball Magazine or the American Cancer Society informing you that they would not hold their event here next year if they're not awarded a grant for the event that has taken place?
No, sir.
So, I think that one may fall to the wayside. And then, the past several weeks, we've seen some unfortunate events with the coronavirus, and I think that the tourism probably will need all quivers, or all arrows in its quiver. So, I don't know that when it comes to marketing Brevard, if these are the best options. I think Mr. Cranis probably could come up with some better ones. I think, you know, my conclusion is very simple, and I think you said it best, those hard-working folks have the right to choose which charity they will support and what amounts to they want to support rather than playing independent contractors with the hopes that some of this is going to be funneled down to charities. If we wanted to give the money to charities, we should just simply go ahead and do it. So, I'm gonna make a motion, Mr. Chair, to reject the legislative finding that the sports event meet the requirement of Florida statute that one of the main purposes of this event is to attract tourists. Mr. Chair?
Just briefly, and then I'm gonna hand it over to Commissioner Smith for comment. I do want to distinguish the comments that you quoted, and those are correct quotes. I don't have any doubt of that. That item that was being discussed was whether or not to continue advertising with what seems to be the most expensive advertiser that we can put our legal ads with. One of the arguments that was made by their executive editor, I believe was her official title or is her official title, was that the folks that either work for that company or are independent contractors for it serve on different charity boards and donate money and resources to charity, and they may do advertisements for free for charity to run up their events. My point was, if that was the goal, we would simply go and hand it to them. The situation we're talking about now, I don't think it's fair really ever to penalize a company for it being a charity. So, if we were bidding on a good or a service and a charity happened to respond to the bid, I don't see that as confiscating taxpayers' money to hand to a charity of our choosing. If that happens to be the successful bid, it is what it is. I'm not gonna say, well, you guys are, at least arguably by virtue of being a charity, a good entity, so here you go. It's irrespective of there being a charity. They don't get or lose points, in my book, based on there being a charity with something of this nature. If there was a process that the T D C went through that started at the subcommittee level, was approved by the subcommittee, went to the T D C as a whole, was approved by the T D C, and is now coming to us for approval, if they were treated identically irrespective of their charity or lack thereof status, I'm not gonna penalize them for that. One of the reasons that I was happy to wait to have this item addressed was, if we have someone representing the B O C C on the T D C, all else equal, and even if it's not all else equal, by and large, I'm gonna defer to that individual because I trust that individual to serve and to represent our interests and to be able to have the level of expertise that we don't have because we all have our own committee assignments. So, with that said, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cranis, this Tourist Development Council Sports Grant, do you have any feel for or numbers on heads and beds? Does this bring in people from Orlando or nearby, or is this further out? Yes, sir. Each, as the grant process unravels, each organization needs to identify what the heads and beds would be. So, they give us a room night count, and then we validate that at the end of the process. So, all of them, according to the committee, they, you know, we're just the administrators. The committee's the one that looks at the grants and grades them. They look at that room night, and then there, that's how the awards are determined. And at the end of it, we just validate and make sure that they've accomplished what they said they were gonna accomplish.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
The T D C, the committee, they put this together and brought this forward, the recommendations out of many requests, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I'm sure they had more than these requests here, but they picked their top ones that they felt would?
In this case, I believe for this round, we usually have about two rounds of sports grants a year. For this round, I think all the people that requested a grant actually received it.
Okay. Was there enough funding?
Yes, ma'am, there was just enough funding to cover that.
Okay. Okay, and as far as like handing it over to the American Cancer Society, we're not. They're putting on a two-day 5K, 10K race that draws a lot of people in. So, these are events that do draw fairly large crowds. I don't know where the vote's gonna be with this, but I'm a support pass in both of these. I think the T D C went through the agenda and picked stuff out. We've had a little bit of differences in the past, we're able to bring suggestions, but ultimately, I think their recommendation typically holds a lot of weight, and there's lesser something that we just would like to make you turn the money over towards something and you would listen to us. So, I'm gonna vote to approve this.
Mr. Cranis, a couple of questions. It's my understanding that all of the commissioners have at least one appointee on the T D C, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Some of us have more than one, just depending on who served as chair which year and when different folks were appointed.
Correct.
Do you recall which of the appointees? And I don't know the answers to these questions, they're not loaded questions in that sense. Do you know which appointee is Commissioner Tabia's appointee, offhand? Or I could defer to Commissioner Tabia?
Who's my appointee? Offhand, I honestly can't tell you.
I believe it's P K Kapoor.
Yeah, sounds about correct, yes.
Okay. So, with respect to these sports grants, was this unanimously approved at the subcommittee level in the T D C, or was this something we had a bare minimum, simple majority to your recollection?
No, the, all of these grants were unanimously approved, both at the committee level and then at the T D C level.
I appreciate that. All right, so I believe we've had enough discussion. I don't see any more lights on this. I'm not gonna belabor the issue. I think folks are...
Yeah, I was gonna say, okay, I'll second that.
All right. So, we have a motion to approve this.
Are you including the legislative findings that are listed one through five?
Yes.
Okay.
Seems to be in the affirmative by our motion maker. And the second stands?
Second stands.
All right, perfect. So, all in favor of approving it? Say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
All right, passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tabia in the negative, or in the nay, if you will.
I'd like to make a motion to approve I-2.
All right, we have a motion to approve I-2. Commissioner, we have a second for Commissioner Smith. We do have a comment, or at least a request here from Commissioner Tabia, as well as three public comment cards which we'll have to address. Commissioner Tabia, do you want me to go through the comments before, or...
Sure, go through the comments before. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. We'll have, and I'll just give you all the order. Andrea Young from Weemel, Alberta, Clink Scales from Palm Bay, and then Sandra Sullivan from, of course, South Patrick Shores. Ms. Young?
Thank you.
And if you bear with me a second, I'm just gonna distribute these so they're not rifling through as you're talking. We'll give it a minute before we start you up here. Got them? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's both an honor and a privilege to serve on this board. As the Chair of the Cultural Committee, I just wanted to come here and put in my two cents. When we vetted all of the 42 applicants for the grant, so we went through them very, very carefully, and by we, I'm saying the entire panel, but we did them independently. So, nine of us worked on this for two months. There was no correspondence in between, there was nothing. So, that's why if you looked at the scoring, and I have it with me in case you don't have it in your packet, I don't know what you have, that's why you see the scoring was all over the place. Of those 42 applicants, six of them did not qualify at all. Those that didn't, I'm very sorry, but they didn't follow the rules. We did. We looked very, very carefully at what the money was for, and I have it here as far as what the cultural money is for. It's cultural, special events such as concerts, arts, exhibitions, festivals operate and similar activities in Brevard County. So, keeping that in mind, we went through, and there was, the B C A and the T D C worked together to come up with the plan that the applicants would use. They have to, the applicants must submit a final report by October 15, 2020, and in that final report, they must include a brief summary specifically describing the event final report, they must include a brief summary specifically describing the event or activity and how it promoted Brevard County as a cultural destination to both visitors and residents, and made a positive impact on Brevard County tourism. So they have to do that before they can even submit to get final payment. Of the 42 applicants, those that, that did qualify, none of them received what they asked for. Those that only asked for $5,000, and those that asked for $25,000, both received the 29% discount. So that was because we didn't have enough money to give them all what they asked for. We had to make it even across the board, so they all suffered the same. If I were to choose, to pick one out, I would have to say the Grant, the Grant Community Club. Now, I'm sure you've all been down to the Grant Festival. I was down there myself in 2016 when I was running for county commission myself, and I was trying to get signatures. I could not find people that lived here. I received very few signatures at that, at that event because no one is from our local area that goes to these events. And since then, I've been going to others, and I find all the, obviously, there are local residents there, but we do bring in a lot of tourists. And I have to say that it is thanks to all of these events that we have. So I just wanted to put my two cents in to let you know that we did vet these very, very carefully, very stringently, and then I would ask that you would please approve all of the grants as written. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. All right, next up, we have Alberta Klink Skales from Palm Bay. Welcome, ma'am.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. My name is Alberta Klink Skales, and I live at 500 Bernardo Avenue in Palm Bay, Florida. And I'm here to represent Space Coast Cultural Arts and Business Organization. So I want to thank you for your time and attention. I also want to thank the Brevard Cultural Alliance and the Tourism Development Council for their hard work and dedication in keeping the impact of culture and arts in the forefront as an economic engine and an amenity to keep those locals living here and spending money here and increasing tourism dollars. I just wanted to impress upon you the benefit of the cultural grant that not only allow organizations to increase tourism and tourism dollars for the county, but also the role arts and culture, as used by our organization, Sakabo, is used to combat community deterioration as well. We are using best practice models for engaging teens in low to moderate income communities to be a part of the process of building the economic conditions of the communities where they live, but also focusing them on community-wide economic, social, and cultural development. The support grant allows us more time to increase sustainability in our programs so that we're not continuously dependent on grants, but it also allows us to get our increased revenue through our entrepreneurship simulation center and the building of our cultural arts mixed-use facility in the city of Palm Bay, which will add to the unique offerings to the tourism landscape in Brevard. And that's a project that's fully supported by the city of Palm Bay. So I just wanted to say, most organizations that are cultural organizations, it's not just about, we want to decrease community deterioration because a lot of times when tourists come to town, they have to be confronted with things in the community, especially low-income communities, that decrease tourism away from some of those areas. And so we're focusing on that as well as increasing tourism in the county. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, last but not least, Ms. Sullivan.
So I was here at the last meeting when some comments were made that not all of them seem to be for tourism. But you can't always plan for some opportunities that come up. And I noticed in the paper this week that FIT was selling its art center. Does Brevard have a cultural arts center? I know some other cities do, and might, as a tourism option, might be, I don't know how you'd even consider this, if it would be under a grant, or how it'd be considered. I don't know enough about the topic, but would it be a consideration for the council to consider this opportunity as having, Brevard having its own cultural arts center to showcase the artists that we have in the area and our history, like the Highwayman paintings and other rich history that we have? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Krantis, I don't know if you want to just briefly address that?
Yeah, it's come to our attention that, and I think, believe it's been brought here before, at least at the TDC, it's been talked about a number of times, that the Fussner Art Museum is being put up for sale by Florida Tech. I believe the list price is $3 million. At this point, you know, we've not, in all those conversations, there's not been any direction from the TDC as far as getting the office involved in that, but it's certainly something we'd be willing to look at if, if the board so desired.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When we had the issue, and we still do, of the lagoon, the Citizens Oversight Committee and the Natural Resources went through it, and they looked at this mathematically. And I think they did a darn good job. It was dollars per pound of nitrogen and phosphorus. That way, we could rate which programs were most effective. I think a similar bent, and I think this was your suggestion, and I think it was a darn good one, a similar bent can be taken to look at the cost per tourist here. So what I did, this was your suggestion, and I think it was a very good suggestion, was to go through, and I had no preconceived notions here, I just used the numbers that were provided by the organizations. And as you can see, assuming that these numbers were correct, they varied by as much as 1,316 multiples. Example would be the O'Gally Arts District. We provided a grant of $15,802. And according to those numbers, if they're true, and I have no reason to believe that they're not, we paid eight cents per tourist. That seems like a very wise investment, eight cents per tourist. Let me go down here a little bit more to the cultural arts and business. Again, I don't know what this one is, but we provided $13,479, almost the exact same amount. So $13,000 for cultural, 15 for O'Gally Arts. For the O'Gally Arts, again, we got $201,000. For the cultural arts and business, we got 128 visitors from out of Brevard County. In other words, we handed 105, if we fund this, we will hand $105 over for folks to come into Brevard County. And, you know, we're, we got $40 here with Dance Arts Center, the Mellurn Chamber Music Society, 36, 31. These are their numbers. These are not numbers that came from Mr. Krantis's department. I don't know that, and I appreciate all the work that TDC did at this, but if we look at this empirically, certainly some are deserving of this, but a large percentage of them certainly are not. And I think that we should ask a more rational, a more empiric, and a more fair approach as we go forward. So I would make a motion to reject legislative finding that the events, the attachment, A, meet the requirements of Florida statute, and that one of the main purposes of the event is to attract tourists. I guess it is if we want to pay $105 per tourist, but I don't think that's the wisest use of resources. Mr. Chair, may I ask one question of Mr. Krantis?
Please.
Mr. Krantis, do we, or have you verified any of the, the numbers of the out-of-county tourists as to whether or not they're accurate or somewhat accurate?
We've begun to take a look at that. We actually purchased some software that lets us look at cellular device data, and we're trying to compare that to, to the information that was provided. We don't have all the results of that yet, but that's something that, going forward, I'd really like to utilize to do that.
Thank you. But again, I'm taking these folks at their word on that. Hopefully, we can verify this. I'm sure that they were honest, and I certainly don't want to penalize anyone that exaggerated those numbers. But everyone has a copy of this, and I think that there's got to be a better way to, whether it was unanimous, I just don't think that this is the wisest in this environment, use of dollars. We should be expending them the same way that we do with the Save Ardena River Lagoon.
Just a couple of thoughts with respect to that, since you did reference something that I mentioned a little while back. This is good info. It's interesting info, and it certainly is remarkable that, based on your spreadsheet here, assuming the numbers are all accurate, which I assume they are, it ranges from eight cents a tourist to $105.31 per tourist. What I don't know, though, is whether the cost per tourist is more important than the amount the tourist spends, or alternatively, the number of nights that they spend in hotels. If the goal is to increase the bed tax, if we have 10,000 tourists, but they drive in for the day, come to an event and leave without spending money elsewhere, or spending much at the event, does it really benefit us as much as having a smaller number of tourists show up and spend a week here? I don't know the answer. I really, I don't know. It depends on what the goal is. And I don't have any problem if the board wants to move forward in subsequent years, saying that from here on out, we're going to, we're going to factor in the cost per tourist over and above, or perhaps instead of heads and beds, if that's something that we're permitted to do, if that's what the board determines is appropriate. But I just don't know that I'm there yet. I don't know that one necessarily is that much better than the other. And as far as the unanimity issue, I don't mean to hammer you on it, but you have at least one TDC appointee. That TDC appointee has at least one, one subcommittee appointee to each of the subcommittees. If everything was unanimous, it's not just that the folks that vote here to support it are in the, in the wrong or in error. It's all of our appointees are in error, and all of their appointees are in error, both mine and yours. So it's, it's something where, you know, I don't mind if you make the case, and it looks like you certainly have a good basis to at least start that, starting in subsequent years, that we need to evaluate this. But I would just need to figure out how we determine whether to prioritize this more highly than heads and beds, or vice versa, or dollars spent, and how we evaluate it. So it's something to think about, and it's something that I'd be much more inclined to support you with if we did it such that it wouldn't affect those that have already been in the process and reliance of what we've told them was available. Commissioner Pritchett?
I agree with that, because I'm looking through it right now, because the Brevard Nature Alliance are the ones that helped put on the Birding Festival, and they'll have 1,000 people sign up for like four or five days. They're all staying in the hotels, and I think most of them from out of town. So I think the, the bed cost in that would be something to consider, too. Mr. Krantis, so this might be a good tool for you guys if you want to find a way to start incorporating some of these into your data, if you want to do it. But again, I agree with you, Commissioner Loebert, it's going to be the return on investment and what it does to help enhance the community for tourism, and then people also wanting to move here.
The other thing to bear in mind, and we talked about this at the last meeting, and it was continued out, not to this, but to the subsequent meeting toward the end of the month, I think the 24th or thereabouts. But the, the other question is, with respect to the TDC, to the extent that we're allowed to do so by statute and any, any other governing law or rule, how much do we value and prioritize helping the locals in addition to driving the tourism sector? If we had an event that brought in a smaller number of tourists, but everyone here loved it and improved the quality of life, you know, is that a factor? Is that, is that something that should be a factor? I'm not, I'm not trying to dictate that, yes, this should or shouldn't be. I just think it's something that's worth considering. And if, if we have a proposal, whether it comes from Commissioner Tabia, whether it comes from someone on the TDC or a subcommittee, I'm happy to entertain it. I mean, to the extent that our hands aren't tied by statute, there's nothing that says any of this is in stone. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This gets directly to return on investment. We can't say that we want return of investment and then have some sort of document and say that that doesn't work. And let me give you an example. Mr. Krantis, can you tell me how many out-of-county visitors, and I should have asked you this ahead of time, I'll give you a second to look it up, I just picked one, the American Police Hall of Fame, the, the number of out-of-town, or the percentage, either one, and I'm asking you a question you can't answer. The reason you can't answer it, because they didn't even include it. Neither did the Brevard Youth Circus, or Choir, the Space Coast Art Festival. I could go on and on. They didn't even provide us with the number of tourists, and we're going to go ahead and fund that to the tune of $65,000, looking at. They did not provide us how many folks would be coming in, and we are arbitrarily going to hand over 65. I don't care if every appointee of mine and yours decided that this was the best way. We are literally handing over $65,000, and we do not know if one person from outside of Brevard County. And yes, we determine whether or not that meets state statute, but let's be honest, we're sticking our heads in the sand on this one, and here are the numbers to show it. And yes, they may spend more versus one or the other, but to put it in perspective, if, if, if one night is spent for the O'Gally Arts District Main Street, to get the same comparable amount at 1,300 times, a person for the, here we go, cultural arts and business would have to spend 3.6 years in hotels to equal that 1,300 times. So, and, and again, the bottom five, we don't even have the numbers, and we're going to appropriate, appropriate money. I think that that is absolutely ridiculous. There's no way that I could support expending those resources without having any numbers.
Commissioner Tabia, regardless of how this vote ends up going, if you were to offer up a motion after this to require those particular variables be specified in the future, I would support that. Just putting that out there. Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, sir. And I, again, this is going to be like owed to Commissioner Loebert, and I, but I also agree with you, some things have a local value. The American Police Hall of Fame, that's a pretty incredible museum there, and I'm not sure that we would have that museum outside of everybody participating, helping to fund that museum, including the TDC. Here's the thing, you guys, I'm looking at Andrea, you sat on this committee, you guys went through the long haul with it. I think we, we should have had input with you, asked you questions back then. I have a representative on it. So I'm going to ask, sir, if we can go ahead and call the motion on this, if we make changes into the future with Mr. Krantis as far as how they work the return on investment, but you're pretty good with those numbers also, of figuring out return on investment as far as beds. And so I'm, I would like just go ahead and call the motion, sir.
Right. Commissioner Pritchett, we do have two more lights, and I know Commissioner Nardi has not had a chance. Would it be all right with you if we allowed those two?
It's up to you, sir.
Yeah, let's, and if you want to put it to a vote, the question is to calling the motion. I'm happy to entertain that, but otherwise, we'll have these two and then put it to, to vote. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Krantis, these people that we, we appoint, they're all volunteers, correct? Yes, sir. And I assume most, if not all, of them show up on a regular basis to listen to these proposals and make these determinations? Yes, sir. They do vet each and every one of these? Yes, sir. And Andrea has already said that they spend an awful lot of time looking at these things. I don't know that any of these categories are something that you can actually put a dollar figure on, although we have numbers here that we can do that. But there are so many variables, as Mr. Loebert has already brought up. Commissioner Loebert, I'm sorry.
I've been called far worse.
I won't go there.
Thank you.
So I understand where Commissioner Tabia is coming from. I just don't happen to agree with it. I, I think that these are tourist dollars, and these are tourist people that are sitting on these boards, and they spend a lot of time and a lot of effort, and they're doing the best they can, and they come up with these items that they think are worthy, and then it's up to us to follow their lead or to just say, no, we don't, we don't agree, and we don't believe it. It's, it's our choice. So I would like to make a motion. We don't have a motion yet, do we? We do?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Are you all on board on the clerk's side, motion with second to approve? Okay. All right, last but not least, Commissioner Nardi?
I was just trying to let everybody else vet their, their discussion and ask questions. Obviously, I've looked at this. And this would be a fair assessment of the cost per tourist if it took into consideration how much the agency was investing into the events. And that's something that isn't, isn't on here. And if you're telling me the Grant Seafood Fest only pays $2,700 for their entire event, that would be inaccurate. That's, that's the tourism money portion. So I'm glad that they're only spending 31 cents per tourism dollar. I can guarantee you that their investment is 50 times that amount. So, you know, I think that that is huge when it comes to looking at this list. I like this list. I appreciate the information, but this is, this is not at all accurate. I mean, O'Gally Arts District, eight cents a tourist, that's great. But I know that they spend more than 15,000 on that Main Street event. So, I mean, there's no way that this is an accurate assessment of a cost, of the cost per tourist. So, I mean, it may be our, our cost as far as what is granted from the TDC, but it's not the cost per tourist. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to use this as the basis of my decision. So, I mean, I think obviously that those other agencies need to provide the information if we're requiring it of the others. I probably would not have approved that, but I'm new to the board. I've, you know, we've had a couple of meetings, and that's it. Obviously, that, that, these items happened before, most of these items came through our board before. our board before I was even there. So that may be something we scrutinize in the future as far as heads and beds goes, but this is not an accurate assessment of a cost per tourist, so.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the questions. So all in favor of approving item J two, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, passes four one with Commissioner Tabia in the negative.
Mr. Chair, did that include the findings that are at the bottom of page one of your agenda?
For those of us that voted the affirmative, is that okay? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes. All right, yes, all around.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving along. It looks like J two is deleted, so we'll go to, I'll just briefly, Jim, what happened with J two? Is it just kicked down, or?
The, the item's not ready to bring to the board, so we'll be going back.
All right, perfect. J three. District three, Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under County Charter, any board, proposed charter amendment need to be certified by a panel of three attorneys dealing with the same, single subject. This item merely issues an RFQ, an RFP for this panel, still going back to the board for ratification. However, should any board member wish to propose an amendment, this step is critical. This does not commit us to ratify any particular language or even accept any of the RFQs or the RFPs. It's just merely a step in the process so that our options are kept open as we develop ideas to improve the charter. So I'd make a motion to authorize a purchase, purchasing service department to develop and re, release the advertisement for either an RFQ or an RFP for establishing attorneys' review of proposed charter amendments, approve the selection and negotiating committees, committees consistent of the county manager, county attorney, central service director, or their designees, and authorize the county manager or his designees to approve any necessary budget change requests upon review of approval by the county attorney's office and risk management. That would be the motion.
Now, I know you didn't just wing that motion.
I read it word for word under the county attorney's approval.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I asked staff about this, and this is something we are gonna be doing next year regardless.
It's a charter commission review starting next year.
Right, so even if we, if we did, this is for next year?
No, this would be if you wanted to put a charter amendment on the general election.
So if we do this, we would have to do this next year, and we have to do it this year also. So, and unless there's a reason, Commissioner Tabia, one specific thing that you want to change, I, I'm not gonna support that this, at this time.
And I'll, I'd like to jump in as well before you, you choose to respond, unless it's?
Well, I mean, it was factually incorrect.
Okay, then go for it, please.
So charter amendment and charter revision, different mechanisms, sort of like the way that we amend the Constitution of the state of Florida. We have a Constitutional Revision Commission that can do it every twenty years, as well as we put amendments on the ballot. The impact is the same, but one, God forbid, we allow citizens to go out and participate, all citizens, a form of direct democracy. And I understand why elected officials may not want direct democracy to happen, because it may not coincide with their particular beliefs, but there is nothing more fundamental to our democracy than allowing people to vote. And if that's not what your intent is, then by all means, let's go the other way in which we select individuals to make decisions on our behalf and perfunctory allow folks to show up at a two or three of these meetings, or let's give everyone the ability to participate and impact this directly. So I, I understand that, yes, there is another opportunity to change it, but it's completely different, and that's why the charter allows for these two different ways to take place. So, yes, that is coming up, but here's a way in which we can give everyone the ability to participate. So they are completely different.
Mr. Pritchett?
If you've got something specific you want on the ballot, sir, I'm ready to listen. But, you know, we're a republic, and we're, we're elected in the position to, to study things out and make good decisions. If we decide to put on the ballot, vote if you'd never like to pay a tax again, it's gonna pass, but it's not the best thing for, for the, for the, for the country. So I think it's our responsibility also to figure out what type of things we put on the ballot. So, again, Commissioner Tabia, if you've gotten something specific, I'm, I'm ready to listen, but I, I'm not gonna vote to support this tonight.
Again, again, I'm, I'm sorry, but that is just gross mischaracterization. That, that is a gross character, that, that does not happen, what, what you just said. That's why they, we have a panel. So if I wanna say, and let me be very clear, I don't agree with this. If I wanna say women can't vote, the, the panel of attorneys would say, you can't put that on the ballot. Here are the five reasons that, that you can't do that. So all this does is set it up so you or anyone else on this board can make that decision. This sets it up so we can find out what it, what it is. It sounds like there's specifically something you don't want on the ballot.
No, sir, there's nothing. I don't, you're bringing this up.
All right, guys.
I wanna know what you want on the ballot.
Mr. Chair? All right, let me, let me jump in here. We'll just put all this to the side for the moment. So it's, you know, it's interesting. I've got some of the same questions, what I'm thinking with respect to this, and I'm just gonna be blunt, if that's okay, Commissioner Tabia?
I would expect nothing less.
I don't know if I take that as a compliment or something other than that.
No, I appreciate it.
But, you know, one of the questions that I had, and I, I can guarantee you that Commissioner Pritchett wasn't reading my notes, 'cause my handwriting isn't that good, but one of the questions that I had drafted to ask you was whether there's a particular amendment that you have in mind that has some chance of passing, regardless of what it might be, so that we're not wasting resources and/or staff time and taxpayer money burdening, or unnecessarily burdening the staff. If there's something that any of us plan on putting up, then I have no problem passing this, presuming there's a realistic chance that it could pass and one of us wants it. But if none of the five of us have a particular amendment in mind, I, I don't know why we're putting together a team at some expense, both financially for the taxpayers and administratively for the staff, to simply exist in case the need arises. We can always put them together if and when the need arises. So I, I'm not trying to prod you for something that, you know, that, that you may not have in mind yet, but if there's some specific amendment or amendments that you have in mind, I would be much more inclined to support this if I heard what they are and if I thought there was some chance that they might pass.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
Thank you. Currently, we are in a disagreement with the clerk of the court. I'm sure you're aware of this, yes?
Yes, I think we all are.
One, our, our county attorney provided a list of possible avenues to avoid that potentially very costly, very expensive, very time-consuming endeavor. Are you aware of one of the suggestions that came out? Not, didn't come from me, to be very clear, came from the county attorney's office. Are you?
I saw it on our whiteboard. I know what you're referring to.
Yeah. Ms. Bentley, can you, I'm sure you are aware of the, the brief that, that you, can you explain what, one of the options the county may have that potentially could save resources, should we go ahead with it?
Well, the dispute is about the language of the charter and what the charter says as to how you calculate your baseline after there's been a supermajority vote, because there's a critical need. So you could amend the charter to add language to clarify that issue. So that would be a charter amendment, if the board chose to put such an item on the agenda. I mean, I'm sorry, on the ballot.
I gotta tell you, Commissioner Tabia, with respect to that, given the way that all of the votes on that issue have gone, having been four one or one four, depending on, on which way you're looking at things, I'm not saying that, that you don't have the most pure motivation at heart, or that, that Scott Ellis, our duly-elected clerk of courts, comptroller, doesn't have the most pure motivations at heart, but I don't think you're gonna get the support of two more commissioners on, on that particular proposal. So it's, I, I appreciate you bringing it up. It's interesting. I, from your perspective, I can see why that would be something that's wise to do, but I, I just happen not to agree with it. But if you can get two more folks to, to jump on board with that being potentially appropriate, I will go ahead and support this item.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I went ahead and looked through this, and your number's off by one. I actually would need
A supermajority?
Three more. And yeah, it's very, I look up and down, it's very difficult to see three other conservatives up here.
What was it that Reagan said? Was it the eighty, eighty-twenty thing?
Right.
Eighty-twenty Reagan quote? I don't know, I thought I saw that once upon a time. All right, so with respect to this, I don't think we have a second on any motion that's outstanding, so any standing motion dies for one of a second. We're gonna go ahead and move on to, drumroll, J four. And not surprisingly, we do have quite a few public comment cards. I will give you all just the first several, actually, only have half a dozen. I'll just give you all the order that they're gonna be called up in, which is the order they were submitted in. First up, we'll have John Windsor from Melbourne, then we will have Charlie Graham from Satellite Beach, Vinnie Toronto, where's Vinnie? Oh, there he is. Hey, Vinnie, from Indie Atlantic, and then Sandra Sullivan from South Patrick Shores, Jay Moynihan from Merritt Island, and Laura Lee Thompson from MEMS. Yeah, Commissioner Isnardi was suggesting we might be able to, to save you guys some time, maybe if we have a little bit of, I presume if we have discussion up here beforehand was what you're?
I understand.
Yeah? Well, it's, it's up to you. Do you, do you wanna kinda get a, a gauge? And I'll defer to Dr. Windsor at first in terms of where the? Okay. And maybe he can help you tell your comments to a degree as well. So basically, we're, I'll, I'll start, 'cause I think I was at least in part the cause for this getting kicked out to this meeting. The question was between approving exactly what was recommended and leaving quite a few dollars unallocated, separate and apart from the reserve amounts, or going ahead and allocating a large percentage of that which was unallocated, which in view of the whole pie or pot was a relatively, I shouldn't even say relatively, it was an objectively small percentage. My thought was, we're not spending it as fast as we're collecting it. There are things that we can do now to avoid having issues with continued septic leaking into the lagoon. There are things that we can do if we're offsetting utilities costs, expanding the system. Were they to do that anyway, which they might not, or probably would not, in some of these areas at least, that would enable them to put funds to updating the system so that we're less likely to have problems as a result of older infrastructure? The question that I see, 'cause it, it seems to me, and I know this was something that I suggested at the last meeting, and all of the emails that I've gotten, and we've gotten quite a few in the office about this item, suggests that the motivation, or at least the predominant motivation, for leaving a portion unallocated over and above the, the amount set in reserve is for unknown future possibilities. One of the messages that, that I think a majority of the commission sent to the COC last year was that we want there to be more emphasis on going from septic to sewer, period. And it went back, and in fact, one of the folks that urged us to, to pass this plan at the last meeting was saying, oh, it's great that we've seen this, this, this balance, I think he may have termed it, I don't recall the, the exact verbatim wording, but it worked last year. I think we're in a better position based upon the county commission having had input. The Citizens Oversight Committee, I respect the work they do, but I also recognize that just as the TDC is an advisory committee, and we don't just exist to rubber stamp the TDC's recommendations, although we have every ability to simply agree with the COC, in which case, I'm happy to stamp it. If we don't agree, or we see a way to accomplish something in a better way, or if we see some slight tweak, as I view this to be, approving everything the COC recommends, I think it puts the, the county in a better position, and it puts the lagoon in a better position to start getting these dollars allocated rather than building up into a mountain of funds that go unused for years at end, especially when we know that these septic tanks on the Barrier Islands in particular continuously are leaking, leaking, leaking. Closer to the lagoon, the bigger the issue, the older the system, and the less advanced, the bigger the issue. With respect to this, I think the, the question for us ultimately comes down to the unforeseen opportunities, which you will not hear that they are, is septic to sewer conversions. I've had, God knows how many conversations with, with Eddie Fontan, our utilities director, and he has never, ever suggested to me, intimated, hinted, or transmitted through telepathy or otherwise, carrier pigeon, what have you, that there will be other opportunities that we should, we should sock away sorrel funds in order to fund down the road. So the question is, do we wanna put this money aside for things like oyster projects or perhaps filtration projects down the road? I, I grant, there may be great filtration projects down the road. I'm not saying there not, but we have projects right now that can use the money right now to improve the state of the lagoon. So, you know, I've read everyone's email that sent an email in, and I appreciate where everyone's coming from. I think everyone that put in a public comment is, is here for the right reasons. You know, a lot of you, I, I know and respect you, others I don't know as well, but I, I have no reason not to assume you came here for the right reasons and for good motivation. But I, I simply disagree that we need to be so conservative with spending it that we, we, in addition to having an amount set aside in reserves, which was agreed to by the COC, and I don't think anyone up here has a problem with the amount or the percentage, we need to sock away an extra amount solely for things that we can't predict. Commissioner Isnardi at the last meeting pointed out as well, again, I don't remember the verbatim language, but essentially that it's building up faster than we can spend it. I mean, that, that to me is something that's, that's tremendously important. If the, if the board doesn't wanna go in the direction of septic to sewer, and they want other projects, you know, whether they're filtration or, or something else that we may not even know about yet, fine, then leave it aside. But, but my thought is, I think the balance is the real question, and I think the balance needs to shift a little bit more heavily in terms of septic to sewer. So with that, Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And these would be questions directed at Ms. Barker with your?
Ms. Barker?
Ms. Barker, to your knowledge, has the COC had time to review these proposals that Commissioner Loebert made on Thursday?
No, their next meeting is next Friday, the twentieth.
Okay. Now, the, and I didn't understand this, and, but this board has made a, certainly rubber-stamped everything that's come from advisory boards previously, so my question was, I, I didn't quite understand why we wouldn't spend that money as, as Commissioner Loebert, yet one of your members brought up and said, things may come up unforeseen. So my question, has a sorrel plan been amended in the past because a project was discovered that had a better ROI in regards to removal of nitrogen and phosphorus than projects that had previously been considered? And can you give me any examples of how much was saved because we had some in reserve and a better project came up?
In two thousand seventeen, there were twenty-one projects that were proposed from the community and Brevard County departments that were swapped out, that were better return on investment than projects that were previously in the plan. Those are, those are all in a table in the plan. There's another table of, of more recent project swaps that happened last year. Also, on the list of projects proposed for this year, there are three septic to sewer projects where the utilities department has looked at the boundaries of those projects, looked at the location of the utility, the lift stations, and they've proposed modifying those projects to, you know, include some additional properties that are more cost-effective and exclude properties that are less cost-effective. So I would say, yes, those, those changes have continued to occur almost annually.
So I don't know, you don't necessarily speak directly for the COC, but from the meetings that you attended, was that the calculation, the, the individual that came up here, and I, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, but he was a financial planner or something, that was the reason that these were most likely held in reserve?
My, my impression of the conversation, and the Oversight Committee had a very lengthy discussion about how far down the priority list to fund and how much to leave, and, and I would sort of characterize it as three different concerns. One is that we're talking about projecting ten years of revenues. The four hundred and ninety-four million is a ten-year revenue projection, and it's based on revenue growing at a rate of one point eight percent. So none of us are sure about what the revenue generation will actually be. That's an estimate. So, so one caution of the committee was, we may not collect four hundred and ninety-four million, and what are we gonna do if we've spent money designing and permitting projects that we can't actually implement, can't afford to implement? Another concern was that in the last two years, we've brought them a number of examples of projects that when we went out to bid, they cost considerably more than the engineer of records cost estimate. We've seen that with construction costs in many different project types. In this recent economy, those construction costs are going up. And so we don't know that the four hundred and eighty-eight million dollars of the projects identified in the two thousand twenty recommended plan will actually be able to be constructed for four hundred and eighty-eight million. plan will actually be able to be constructed for $488 million. If too many of them come in over that cost, then that would be another concern. Then the third thing was what you have all just discussed, which was this potential for new opportunities. And the specific example that I recall from the last Oversight Committee meeting was, folks have been very concerned about the clam industry that was lost from the county. And clams have had a very rough time surviving in the lagoon, but there are some clams still out there. And there's a team of scientists and research institutes that are currently engaged in collecting these large surviving clams that they have named super clams, taking them to a hatchery, getting them to reproduce, and seeing if we can't use them to return clams to the lagoon. And that was something that the committee was excited about and hoped might be an opportunity for the future.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Sure. I have a couple of questions just for Ms. Barker on the same topic, and then I'll hand it over to Commissioner Pritchett. And I just want to make sure that I'm on the same page and that I understood the questions from Commissioner Tobias as he posed them to you. So one of them was, if I recall correctly, whether the COC reviewed the proposal that I made. My understanding, just to make sure we're all on the same page, is they didn't review the proposal that I made insofar as it was a new proposal, but they did review each and every one of those projects, and each and every one of those projects were next in order to the extent that we could fund them. There was one that was skipped because it, in and of itself, was over the entire pot that's remaining. But skipping that one item that we couldn't have funded with the unallocated portion, even if we funded nothing else, everything that we could fund with the unallocated portion was next in order, and they were all at the same dollars, dollar cost per pound, total pounds of nitrogen removed, as some of the other items that were approved. The other item, the other question that I believe was posed by Commissioner Tobias, dealt with whether there were improvements and whether there were cost savings in the past as a result of having left money unallocated for the potential that future opportunities might arise which would be more beneficial. What I heard, Ms. Barker, is that you mentioned 21 items were swapped out, not that they were added out of the unallocated funds. It sounds to me, from swapped out, that items that were approved were taken off and supplanted and replaced with new items. So if that was something that was beneficial, and I'm not saying it's not, it probably was if the decisions were made up through the chain, we could do the same thing if we approve the suggestions, or pardon me, the modifications that I'm proposing. If we find in the future that something that's not already done and putting the lagoon in a better state, if it's not already been implemented and the money's not already been committed, go ahead and swap it out. If there's a better option, God bless you, I'll support it myself, I'll take it off. But I just didn't hear, and I'm not trying to be facetious by any means, but I didn't hear that there was anything that was added out of an unallocated amount for want of a better, you know, better opportunity. I just wanted to make sure that I did hear correctly, that those were items that were switched out. And I think you mentioned 21 at first, and then you mentioned something about others potentially having been switched.
Yes. So my understanding of the question was whether we had ever swapped projects out, so that's why I answered it that way. We certainly have, the committee has also recommended the addition of projects. Last year, when the board asked the committee to consider moving $100 million out of Muck into other types of projects, primarily human waste-related projects, the committee identified around $50 million worth of projects to do just that, brought that recommendation to the board. You approved that. That left another, just under $50 million still unallocated. That was part of, you know, that made up the majority of the funds that go to the 43 projects that are now proposed for addition, that total $55.5 million in cost.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Loeb, I'm going to request that we do something, I think it'll alleviate some of the pressure off the audience.
Sure.
I think we're all in agreement, we're going to go ahead and approve the allocated amount. I think our conversation's right now, the amount that's unallocated. So can we go ahead and break this into two motions and just make a motion to approve the allocated amount, and then we'll continue with motion two, is how we're going to process the unallocated.
Sure, I'm happy to accept the motion and second it.
Okay, can I make a motion to approve the allocated amount with the...
All right, Commissioner Smith? I think it was too late, I'm going to call the second on that one.
Okay, whatever.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the projects that were proposed by the COC, and that's the totality of this motion. We have a second, all in favor of approving that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes 5-0.
Okay, and my other thought is, is I really don't mind go ahead and allocating the reserve funds because there's so much extra funds coming in. Again, they're projecting $50 million this year. So I'm fine with that. Commissioner Loeb, though, what I would like to go ahead and consider, because Commissioner Nardi brought this up last week, and I think her district's well behind as far as funds, that maybe the group can get together and we can just let them maybe throw in some suggestions from her, too. But again, the projects that are coming up next, I'm fine with those, too.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, there are several in the list, I'm not talking about monetarily, but in terms of the raw number that are in Merritt Island, so it does, in that sense, have more projects out of those that have been proposed out of the COC ranking that would benefit D2. But frankly, if there's something else, I don't care about them extra.
I have no problem with that. I was just, I've just been looking over the projects, and she brought this up last week. So I think if maybe we allow the COC to come back with hearing us, that maybe they can just search for some projects there, too. But again, I don't have any problem with that either because we're removing the maximum amount of these yucky stuff we're putting in, so.
All right. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. Have we heard from the speakers?
No.
Well, why are we involved in all this conversation before we even hear them?
Because they wanted to gauge where we were at before they spoke.
Oh, I got it. Okay, sorry, I missed that part.
They're wanting to...
I missed that part, I apologize.
No worries.
But I would like to say, just weigh in a little bit.
Yes, sir.
I don't disagree with your premise. Let's go ahead and do these six. However, the problem I do have is that none of us have a crystal ball. Because if we approve these projects, the studies will start, we will be spending the money on these six projects. Now let's suppose a couple of things happen. One, we've already covered. New technology comes along that makes one of these, or two of these, or maybe all of these projects, something that would be a second tier. So that something else comes along that's more important. Well, all the money that we've already invested in studying these projects, that's going to be thrown away, that's going to be wasted. Now, that's money that can't be used on the projects because we've already spent it investigating and starting the process on the six projects. So that's number one, that's, so that's crystal ball number one. Number two, my parents always told me, don't spend money you don't have, meaning that we're talking about all this money that's coming in, like it's going to continue to come in. Well, we're, folks, we're in a situation right now where tourist taxes are probably going to take a big hit in this county, in this state, and all over this country, and in fact, all over the world, because whoever foresaw coronavirus or any other thing coming along that was going to cause tourists to stay home and cancel trips. So we could take a big hit this year, next year, we don't know how often. And we don't know if this is going to be a one-time thing or not. Look at all the, and I'm one of these guys that I think this is a bunch of do about nothing. We've had, in the last 10 years, I'm guessing, we've had H1N1, we've had SARS, we've had norovirus, we've had who knows what. And now all of a sudden, this one's like scaring the bejebers out of everyone, and, but the reality is, tourists are staying away. So one of two things can happen. People can get really scared, or the next time something happens, just like hurricanes. The hurricane that was predicted to wipe us all out doesn't hit, and then the next time a hurricane comes, people say, ah, I'm not worried about that hurricane because they don't ever hit us. And that could be the one that does. So that could be something else that's at play here. But again, that's part of a crystal ball that we don't have. So those are the reasons I have for not approving these. Not that I don't think it's a good idea, I don't, it's not that I don't like these projects, I just think that it could be a waste of money if we do get better projects that come along, and we may not have all that money that we think that we're going to get. So we've done really far, really well this far, but we don't know if we're going to continue to do this well going forward. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Nardi?
Yes, I'll just say, you know, we have the money, we have the money, and not spending it, I think, is more of a disservice, given the critical state of our lagoon. We have a reserve, and anything that happens with new information on projects could happen to any one of the projects, whether we started now or started later. It could happen with the existing, it's not like that list, it's like, oh, that's the bottom-of-the-barrel stuff and has no value. That list made it to that list, and it also was, and again, was brought up again, but I'll say, was reviewed by the sorrel committee. It wasn't like it was, you know, oh, it's somebody's idea or it's some citizen request. These are projects that are ready to go. And I think that, I think honestly, like most things, like most of our capital projects, we're doing a huge disservice if we don't spend that money. We have it, let's spend it. We have reserves for emergencies, we have, you know, we have people anxious to get back on a healthy river. I mean, it just makes sense to spend it. If those projects are in the hole...
I agree with you 100%, except that, what if we get to it, because if we start the projects today, we're not going to get them done in the next two or three or five years. And what happens if that money doesn't continue to flow in like we expected? How about if it doesn't keep flowing in like it has been? Then we don't have the money to spend.
And then we just instead build up tens of millions of dollars and not spend it?
I don't, we're not building up tens of millions. How much are we talking about these six projects?
How much is it total?
Around $7 million.
But what I'm saying is, what we've done in the past, and like, again, the reason why in 2017, I'm sure we, why we had 21 swap outs, is because we found better projects. So that will happen as these projects go forward. I just can't see waiting. It doesn't make sense to wait. It's not like these are whim stuff, these are legit projects that have value.
And I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, $6 million, it's very feasible that we may not have that $6 million because if tourism goes through the floor, we're not going to collect the money.
You really believe tourism is going to go through the floor here?
Just look at what's happening already.
And we have a reserve as well. I mean, you can't, you can't be afraid to spend the money that we have.
I hope you're right.
Virginia, what's in our reserve roughly, or what's anticipated as being in there?
There, the problem is, there are, right now, there are reserves, what the county in the budget calls reserves, they are allocated, those dollars are allocated to projects, they're allocated to multi-year projects and future-year projects. So the only dollars that are not designated for specific projects are the $6 million that you're talking about.
And allocated to future projects has not been spent.
Right, the only...
So that could be reallocated potentially?
So the $6 million that we're talking about is basically money that we would expect to come in in year 10. How are we going to spend that last $6 million that comes in in year 10?
How much has not been allocated, I mean, has been allocated to future projects that has not been spent?
Quite, quite a bit. Because it takes years to get projects.
Correct. So it can be reallocated, as far as, you know, you may have that allocated based on your plan, but that can be reallocated based on, again, finding a better project or otherwise. If we find something that is huge, or technology gets better, or something that provides us more value, you're going to be the one recommending to your board that we reallocate that money because it hasn't been spent yet, correct?
We have, we have collected $133 million. We have about $250 million in projects that are either constructed in construction or in design permitting bidding process. So they won't complete construction until we've collected those dollars, but we're already doing the groundwork so that they're ready to construct when we have the dollars available.
Virginia, just brief follow-up with that. Let me ask you, and I fully grant that we'll have some projects out of the many projects that are involved in the plan that will have cost overruns, I get that, I will grant that. But assuming, just for the sake of discussion, everything costs what we anticipate, not a penny more, not a penny less, what is set aside in that reserve? What is the actual raw dollar figure?
So we have a contingency of 5%, and the value of that in the 2020, the recommended 2020 plan is $23 million.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I think we've pretty much covered the whole, I'm not going to repeat myself, so there's no point.
All right, Commissioner Pritchett?
I'd like to make a motion, sir, that we would send this back to the COC and to consider options to go ahead and start allocating some more of these funds and to come back with recommendations. And on that note, if we run into a problem where this all takes a dive, we've got a big problem countywide, you know, bigger than this, and we're going to have to adjust things everywhere, so.
All right, Commissioner Tobias, then we'll have public comment before we call the vote. Oh, yeah, absolutely, no, I'm just seconding it for purposes of discussion. All right, that's all, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Fair enough. All right, Mr. Windsor, Dr. Windsor, come on down. You see, you wanted to get a pulse, you got the whole assessment there.
John Windsor, Melbourne, Florida, yeah. I was hoping what you would say, yes, we're in favor of it, you can all go home now and you don't have to make public comment. And so after your lengthy discussion there, everything that I'd worked on for the last three days just went out the window. I think there's some real misunderstanding, and perhaps we need to have a tutorial here about the funding for the project, what this means to have funds allocated for projects, projects that are underway. There seems to be some misunderstanding amongst you folks that these monies can be yanked and pulled for something else. It's not the case. If we do, we're throwing, they'll be thrown away on projects. So rather than belaboring this, because we only have two minutes left, I'm going to suggest that perhaps somebody speak with you all, either individually or a group, a workshop or something, about what this budget really means, because you don't, I don't think you understand it. I thank you for approving the budget part that you approved, I think, I think you approved what we asked for. And you want to add this amendment for saving $6 million or so that we recommended. The reasons, Virginia already said, the revenue projections, increased construction costs, it sounds to me like you're adamant you want to get this money allocated right now. I'm going to ask you out of fairness, don't do it now, give us at least one more year to tell everybody that this is the last year, you can't come to this program for funds anymore. Because what you're doing, in essence, is making it impossible for anybody to say, in good conscience, they should write a proposal to us with a newer, improved technology when there's no money to be had, because you've allocated all of it. So please, don't do this now, and I'm not sure if I'm violating sunshine by saying all this now, but you've got me so revved up about this, I had to come forward and say this. There are some other COC members here, and maybe they don't want to talk after me because that might be some sort of violation of sunshine, because we're talking about things that you may send to our next meeting. So please, I would vote down this idea of sending it back to COC for their advice on this, and I would just say, hold off for one year. If you want to do this, tell us now you want to do it, and we'll go back and address it next year with the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tobias?
So it sounds like there's a motion on the table to send it back. You sit on the, sir, you sit on the COC?
I do.
All right, I haven't been dressed, great, I haven't been dressed down like a professor, like, as a professor, I've done this many times. Wow, I feel...
I actually passed my original comments by people saying, are you being snarky? And I said, no, I'm not being snarky. I says, enough of that going around in Brevard County, Michigan, because we don't need it.
I appreciate your bluntness. If that motion was to pass that is on the table and we were sending it back to the COC, there's no sunshine violation here because you're not speaking with those, and when they come up here, you suspect we would hear exactly what you just said, hold off?
I don't know what they'll say, because I don't know what, they're inside my head right now.
But that was the discussion that you had at the last COC?
I am the chair of the COC, starting on Friday, March 20th, at 8:30 in the morning, live on Space Coast Government TV.
Just to be clear, you've had this discussion, as Ms. Barker mentioned before, whether or not to allocate that $6 million or to hold it, correct?
Yes, and I brought up at the last meeting in this discussion with the COC that it was not fair to our partners to zero out all the dollars.
And it sounded like, you know, Commissioner Smith, Ms. Barker, and yourself now have mentioned the same three things three different times. So I'll make it four. We're projecting out $500 million, we don't know whether or not we're going to receive that. Projects sometimes come in above cost, and three, opportunities change where we may get more pounds per dollar of nitrogen, and for those reasons. So if I was to vote, and I haven't, I, you know, I appreciate all the work you and your board does, and I think we should pay you, these experts, the exact same courtesy, the four-to-one vote that we pay the other ones who don't have the doctor in front of their name to make these decisions. But if we were to send it back to you, you would just, it would be your vote, not you of the board. of the board, but your vote to say, no, let's look at this again in a year. Is that, is that?
That would be fair in my mind. Tell us now that you want to zero it out, and, and we'll, and we'll, and we'll go talk about it.
I trust you, sir, and I will be voting against sending it, sending it back. It sounds like what, as the future chair, that's what's important to you. You've discussed this, and that's the conclusion that you came to. Again, we would just be asking you to do the same thing that you've already done in the past. Is that fair?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will say, I, I don't know that all of the folks in the C O C, and please enlighten me, Doc, if you will, if they're all doctors as well?
No.
No? Are the majority doctors?
I don't know.
You don't know, you don't have any idea?
I don't think that the majority are doctors, no.
Okay. So I mean...
Remember, the C O C is made up of several, you know, seven different stakeholder groups?
I'm well aware, sir.
Okay. One science, and I'm not, I'm not part of the science group, okay? I'm part of the advocacy group. There's real estate, there's, you know, there, there are seven groups, each with two reps.
I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, all of us in this room, in that there is certain expertise, but it's not that everyone on the C O C has a doctorate in water chemistry or quality.
And the discussion's not about water chemistry or quality? I don't want to be argumentative, but no, they don't, but the discussion's about fairness to the people who've been in this effort to restore the lagoon with the cities and the county.
Is it your belief that the folks up here aren't in the same effort?
I don't know. When, when, I, when I see that there were, I think, I forgot the number, I think there were 30 projects that were suggested from Brevard County Utilities, that went far beyond all the rest of the money that was available in the plan. We couldn't possibly, even if we decided to go all with them, we vote, we voted a significant number of Brevard County Utility projects. Yet I hear you saying that, you know, we need to do more because we're not doing enough. And I, and, and, you know, I beg to differ. We really have done a lot. We've gone, we've gone a long way from where we were last year to this year.
Well, let me, let me just bring up the speed on this just real briefly, and this is the best of my understanding. I can tell you, at least speaking for myself, I didn't push for any particular project to be sent from Brevard County to the C O C. I simply pushed that many options be presented. And if, if it was perceived that our giving you all more options from which to choose was somehow a negative thing, I apologize that that was the perception, but that was no one's intent, that I'm aware.
And I'm not saying it was the perception. And, and, and the idea of fairness I'm talking about, Commissioner Zanardi brought up a great idea for a project in the Melbourne Tillman Canal District last time, and next year, if you guys zero out these funds, there's no way they can come in and ask for money.
We can't swap it out the same way we swapped 21 other projects?
We're not going to get a proposal from anybody when there's no money available. You say, you know, when you allocate all these dollars for projects, there won't be any money for, why would somebody write a proposal to?
Sir, I apologize. Commissioner Zanardi is right. I, I think, you know, we're just kind of going back and forth at this point. So, we'll, we'll go ahead and move on. Charlie Graham from Satellite Beach.
Well, after that.
How are you going to follow that up, sir?
All right. Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I've been waiting for 25 years for sand at the mid-reach, and it's looking great. So, I'm here in support of retaining the $6 million unallocated reserve in the I R L budget. Although the vice chairwoman's quote that the lagoon tax revenue is, quote, "coming in hand over fist, and we can't spend it fast enough," that could have been absolutely correct when it was spoken, but today is a different story. Brevard greatly relies on tourism tax dollars, especially from the cruise industry. There will be significant reduction in those revenues, at least for the foreseeable future. Carnival stock nosedived today to the point where its trading was halted. Yesterday, the CDC and State Department recommended that American citizens, quote, "should not travel by cruise ship," end quote. Additionally, today, the CDC recommends that older adults and those with underlying health issues avoid long plane trips and crowded spaces. It's not all bad news, as gas prices are plummeting. That raises a unique opportunity to raise revenue for our roads and bridges. This commission should raise the local gas tax 10 cents a gallon. With prices down to $2 a gallon and dropping, no one would even notice the difference. Unforeseen crises present unique challenges and opportunities. This commission can seize the day and do the right thing by retaining the $6 million for the Indian River Lagoon and raising the gas tax by a dime. In case you want to go for a cheap trip, Friday at a port in Avril, Royal Caribbean, $159 for a three-night cruise. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Vinnie Toronto, welcome, sir. Good to see you.
Vinnie Toronto, Indy Atlantic, and I'm also on the Citizens Oversight Committee. First off, thank you, commissioners, not only for letting us come and speak, but for the kind words you, you have said about, about the committee. There really is a good group of people, and they're really smart and dedicated. And we do spend a lot of time talking about these things. The reason that I voted to keep the plan the way it is, while super clams are cool, that was not the reason. That was not the main reason for me. There is a dance that is going on, and that dance is spending money that we have collected, planning for money we have not collected, but also being aware of what's out there. We're talking about half a billion dollars, and there's $6 million that we have set aside other than 23. So if you combine the two, let's say $30 million out of that, that is not allocated. Now, those projects Virginia talked about that we swapped, that was very early in the plan, and no dollars had been spent on any of those. So we did not lose any money. I take my responsibility, and the others on the committee do as well, fiscal responsibility very seriously. I do not want to spend a dime that we do not end up utilizing. And if we do not have the ability to go ahead and pick different projects at different times, then the chance of us spending money that we will not end up using is higher. As Dr. Windsor said, every year, we look at projects. Projects come in, we ask the cities and municipalities for projects. Give us projects. And we want shovel-ready projects. We don't want people to give us projects that have been done three years in advance, four years in advance. We want stuff that's done now, because as part of that dance, time is of the essence. And if we can get a project done tomorrow, that may increase the amount of, of bad stuff it takes out of the lagoon. So we looked at the projects that came through, and the reason that I voted them was, one, again, we've, we don't know what we're going to collect. Two, the construction overage cost we've seen has been way higher than the 5% that we have saved. So these big projects that are $30 million, $40 million, even a small percentage of that, 10% is $3 million. So we need to have some money left over, and I voted so that we could have that money left over, so that we are not wasting any taxpayer dollars. So as Dr. Windsor said, next year, there will be another set of projects that come out. If you all move to send this back to the committee, that, that's great. I will probably end up asking that we wait another year and let more projects come in, stuff that is shovel-ready. And at that time, we can decide whether there are projects that we then want to recommend. So again, thank you very much for your time and your kind words, because as Commissioner Tobias said, both your commission and ours, we have one goal in common, and that's to save the lagoon. So thank you. Any questions, too, let me know.
Commissioner Pritchett, do you have any questions for Vinnie? Vinnie, just real quickly, Bobo speaks well of you.
I know he does. He speaks well of you, too. He said you're a good shot.
I appreciate it.
Anyone, anyone who questions, Commissioner Loeb is a good shot with a gun.
All right. We won't get into that here, but thank you. Ms. Sullivan?
Heard a lot tonight about dollars per nitrogen, and what we voted on was not dollars per nitrogen on cleaning up projects. What we voted on was cleaning up the lagoon. And as an advocate, the, one of our primary concerns is infrastructure, and that also was in what we voted for. What I don't see in the lagoon plan is addressing the infrastructure. Now, I'm going to give you a real-world example of why that is important. There's a report that, that came out regarding, involving the University of Florida, the city of Cocoa Beach with their sewage plant. Ms. Barker was on the recipient list for that report. And I identified after Irma, a potential problem with INI, which is infiltration into the sewage pipes, being transported to the sewage plant in Cocoa Beach and being redistributed as reclaimed water. That, in fact, actually occurred. The contamination levels north of Patrick Air Force Base are in the range of 200 and 300 parts per trillion. That runoff goes into the lagoon. We also have in that report, direct drainage from Patrick Air Force Base, which has the third highest PFAS level in the country of military bases, draining directly into the Indian River Lagoon. I also have 20 to 30, 40,000 pages of documents indicating decades of draining and dumping of contaminants into the river, into the Indian River Lagoon. In addition to that, Mr. Bocock, Aaron Brockovich's sidekick, has brought to our awareness that where you see PFOS go may be a tracer for where the other contaminants have gone, which would have also have gone via INI to those areas. So what do we have here? We don't have just an issue with nitrogen in the Indian River Lagoon, we have a contamination problem. And as you heard the lady from the turtle conservatory, the diseases in the sea turtles, the diseases in the dolphins, the diseases, the diseases in the mullet, we have need for, to do studies on the organisms that are in the Indian River Lagoon, to do studies to figure out how we need to clean up the lagoon, which goes beyond Muck. Now, I understand that the nitrogen is important because of the BMAA caused by algae blooms and the impact on health, and certainly that is really important. And Dr. Burrell's work is just incredible. I understand the importance of septic to sewer. But we're still putting in more septic systems because some of our plants are operating at near capacity. The, the pipes are still leaking in South Patrick shores, which we were promised they would be lined after the last 22 million, million gallons of sewage went into the Indian River Lagoon, and still we're not seeing anything. So maybe some of those monies should be set aside appropriately for addressing the, the infrastructure, which is what we voted on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, commissioners. Well, at the, first of all, I'm Jay Monahan from Merritt Island. I'm a member of the Citizens Oversight Committee. I would, first of all, quickly repeat the three reasons that we voted, that we did. Concern about overruns of costs are certainly one of them. But also, again, looking at $6 million out of a half a billion dollars, I mean, it's talking 1%, slightly over 1%. I mean, it's a minuscule amount. The main thing, though, at the expense of not repeating what John and Vinnie already said, Commissioner Loeb, you were concerned specifically about these, or you looked at sort of the next five projects on the list?
Yes, sir.
And then discarding the $13 million one, the other four added up to six, to $6 million. So you, so, but you did say something that I, I did want to comment on, and that is, we spent, as a committee, a lot of time going over this list. And you questioned whether the cost was the same for these new, these unallocated projects as it was for the allocated projects. And in fact, it actually, one of the reasons that we drew the line where we did was because there was a significant jump in the cost per pound of nitrogen removed at that particular line from $1,715 per pound to $1,848. Again, I mean, it's kind of an arbitrary line that was drawn at that point, but there was a reason that we stopped there as opposed to maybe going one more project or two more projects. So I want you to realize that we, as a committee, spent a lot of time looking over the projects that were proposed. We spent even more time talking about whether we were going to allocate all of the funds or not, and chose not to for, again, the three primary reasons that have been mentioned I won't repeat. But if, if you're, if you're going to do anything, I would certainly ask that you give us this other year that John asked for, to advise potential project requesters that the money is not there to be requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Barker, just a quick question for you on that. You recall, your office had given me a large format spreadsheet printout with the different projects, and we discussed where the cutoff was?
Yes, sir.
Do you recall one of the columns in that project was the total cost, or the, I'm sorry, the cost per pound of total nitrogen being removed out of the C O C, out of the sorrel funds?
Right. So out of the sorrel funds, they're all at the $1,500 cap. I believe what Mr. Monahan was talking about was there's another column that's total cost, and the, the total cost, when you consider both the sorrel funds plus the additional cost that Brevard County Utilities would have to absorb, is a higher cost per pound as you work your way down the list.
Or municipality, for that matter, whatever it may be.
Correct.
But the cost out of the half-cent sales tax, the voter-approved half-cent sales tax, per pound nitrogen removed would have been the same, whether we're talking 64 or 67 on the list?
Yes.
I appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Last but not least, Lauralee Thompson from Mims. Good to see you.
Good to be seen.
It is a good thing.
Lauralee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, Mims, Florida. And I'm your tourism alternate on the Citizens Advisory Committee. And I think that, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but tourism's not looking so good. And since tourism, tourists contribute about 30% of the taxes that are being collected for the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Plan, I don't think it would be wise right now to commit to that $5 or $6 million, because we really don't know whether we're going to have the money to spend in the end. And I've spent a lot of time in Tallahassee the last few weeks. And Senator Mayfield's water bill has a lot of, you know, first thing it's going to do is, is demand that there's a study on septic to sewer, and, you know, what, what kind of impacts are being felt from septic systems. And I think that once that report comes out, I think that you're going to see the Florida State Legislature start figuring out how to get more money to be available for the type of projects that are being considered. So I, I really think it would be wise to wait for some, you know, a year, see what happens with the economy, and then see where, where the state is as far as allocating money for these kind of projects. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, can I just call you Lauralee? I'm used to it.
Sure, absolutely.
I appreciate it.
I've been called worse.
Us both. We're in the same, same boat with that one. Now, you know, on a, on a prior item that we had in a recent commission meeting, I made the comment, I didn't want to wait on the state to do our job. And one of the reasons that I said that was because a bill had come up in the past in that item, just as with this item, to accomplish exactly what you're talking about, and it, it got killed.
Mm-hmm.
I wasn't happy that bill got killed, and I won't be happy if this one ends up getting killed. But, you know, my concern is, if we have the ability to do it now, whether we do it now, or whether we're waiting unnecessarily. But what I'm, what I'm curious about is if that bill passes, and there's matching, potentially matching funds from the state for some amount, whether it's 10 million or 50 million, or whatever the number may end up being, if, if anything passes, wouldn't that, if anything, reduce the cost for septic to sewer projects, such that if we have them lined up and ready to go with the money already allocated?
We, we would actually have the matching money to apply for these projects. So I think we would be ahead of the other counties. And then that would free up some of our own money for other projects. So it, it would be fantastic.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And that's it for public comment. Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Loeb. Ms. Virginia, as far as the money that we're talking about allocating, this is the money we projected for 10 years for the lagoon fund that we've allocated out, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So just a couple thoughts. I really appreciate the committee that gets together and, and puts all this stuff together. And please understand, even though we're talking about this, my recommendation is we send it back to you guys, and you come back with recommendations for that amount. So when we're talking about these projects and stuff, okay, let's say that, you know, worst-case scenario, tourism falls off next year. You know, we might have to make 20 millions in cuts in the plans that you guys have already You know, we might have to make 20 millions in cuts in the plans that you guys have already brought forth because we're planning on this amount of dollars. So you're already going to have to do that if we have bad tourism years. So whether they're going to be better or not, I mean, that's just something we're going to have to deal with later. But here's my thought, and maybe it's the female in me, I don't know, or the accountant, but you've got so many amount of dollars in it, I want to see that you have a plan for those dollars. Otherwise, one is politicians, we think we have money we can spend because you don't know where to spend it. Or is public opinion is we're collecting too much money because we don't have them allocated to projects that you feel are essential to the project. So again, I want to send this back to you, and you guys come up with the ideas of where you think those dollars should go. And again, if we have bad years, you're going to have to make the cuts on more projects than that. But I feel confident that if we send these back to you, you're going to come back with recommendations that you're comfortable with. I'm not trying to do your job, and I'm not trying to tell you the ideas you haven't come up with are good because I approved your projects. But on the point of what's been brought up, having $6 million just sitting there with nowhere to go, I want you all to find somewhere to go. And if the worst case scenario comes, we have bad tourism, then we're going to have to make cuts, and you guys have to figure out where we're cutting them for recommendations, and we'll approve it. But if we have surplus, then hot dog, we're off and merrily kicking out some more projects coming in. But I want to see that you guys have a plan for these dollars, that you feel are significant of where these monies should be spent that are coming in. Otherwise, my head thinks we're collecting too much money, and I know that's not the case. Don't print that, Mr. Berman. So if you would, I'm going to agree with the motion. We send it back to you guys, and you guys figure out where you're going to allocate these funds, and I'm open for your ideas.
I'm going to start with a little bit of negative and then kind of move it in a more positive direction, hopefully, at least that's my intention here. I got to tell you, I'm not happy, and that's kind of a lightweight of putting it in an abundance civility here, to have even the implication that we don't have the same goals up here that you all do on the COC with respect to improving the lagoon. I didn't spend a six-digit amount of my own money, after-tax dollars, to run for a position to go ruin the lagoon. I don't have a financial interest in seeing the lagoon ruined. If anything, I have a financial interest in seeing it improved based on where I own property. Now that said, I understand there's some presumption that because we don't necessarily agree with the decision by the COC with respect to, as we've heard, roughly 1% in that ballpark of the overall amount that's been sent to us with a particular allocation in mind, just because we don't agree with you doesn't mean that we're uninformed Neanderthals. I'll just put that out there. All of us up here, I know I have, I would imagine everyone else has done their homework with respect to this, and spent many, many, many hours. It's not been just three days for me spent on this. This has been a considerable amount of time. What I can tell you is, with respect to the contention, for many of my colleagues, that because someone may have a doctorate, that they are therefore better informed. Yeah, they may be, but I know folks with doctorates in relevant fields that have different opinions with respect to how to prioritize this money. You know, a real estate sector representative is great and has expertise with respect to that particular field or that specialty. Someone on the science side, that's great. They have expertise in their particular specialty or area of interest. We have a diverse group on there. Everyone is well-intentioned. At least, I would like to think so. I would hope so. Everyone up here is well-intentioned as well. I don't gain anything personally by improving or deteriorating our utility system. What I can tell you is, even folks that came in supportive of what the COC recommended and nothing more at the last meeting, didn't realize that what the COC had done, that they were supportive of, was a result, at least in large part, of the input that this body has had. You know, we were elected to do a job, or several jobs, and part of that job involves scrutinizing the recommendations of advisory committees. If you're getting 99% of what you've asked for, actually getting 100% of what you asked for, which is a lot better than it was last year from a percentage basis, and we're talking about a trivially small amount in the scheme of the overall project list, we're not on opposite sides of things. And to try to make this something where it's polarizing, it's just, it's not beneficial. What I can tell you with respect to waiting a year, and we had this last year with the COC, where we rejected something, it came back, and it was in better shape, I hope you guys get the message that we want to see that money allocated. Now, I'd like to see your recommendations for how you'd allocate it, but giving people an opportunity out of fairness to extend it another year, the lagoon, out of fairness, doesn't deserve to wait another year while it continues to deteriorate, or in the alternative, not get the attention that we're able to give it. I think that's the priority. You're welcome to disagree. I respect your opinion. I don't necessarily agree with it if you disagree with that. But the point is, we need to do something. And as Commissioner Pritchett mentioned, if tourism tanks, you're going to have to do some real soul searching and reorganizing as it stands. If this is roughly 1% of the overall pot, if tourism tanks, and it tanks by more than 1%, guess what? There's some other projects that ain't going to happen either. So, you know, my thought is, if we get to the position, and I'm not suggesting this is what I want to do, but let's say, let's say we're, you know, our eyes are bigger than our stomachs, and we end up chewing off a little more than we ought to, and we're over by 6 million, and I can't fathom that it would be 6 million on the dot, but let's say for giggles, let's say 6 million, we're over. And at the end of the 10 years, and if tourism tanks now, I don't think it's going to be tanked for 10 years on account of coronavirus or the remainder of the 10 years on account of any particular virus. We get to the end, and we're 6 million short. We either have to cut projects along the way, which we otherwise would have to, no harm, no foul, or minimal harm in the little expense that we will have put into the additional projects up to that point. Or alternatively, we source it from other areas. Just because we have a half cent sales tax doesn't mean that there is an edict from down high that says we shall not use any other funds to improve the lagoon. If at the end of 10 years, we have to pull 6 million out of the general fund or otherwise, it's not the end of the world. If we get the projects done, wonderful. It is what it is. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to, I'm going to vote against this motion, and I don't know how it's going to go, but I very rarely ever do this. I appreciate all the work the COC is doing, and I like the scientific approach. I never mind the answer no if there's a reason. And you guys have given three very good reasons as to why to hold that. So should we send it back? I want you to understand that you need three votes, and you have my vote. I think you've made a darn good, so if we send it back, please bring it back to me. I will fully support holding that in reserve for the three very valid reasons. I think Commissioner Smith sounded like he was on the same page there on this one. So I don't know where he's going to be. So I've got two other commissioners up here who are, it sounds like, who are strongly in favor of doing this. So I'm telling you to play politics. There's a fifth commissioner here that you may want to have a conversation with as to, and make your point again on those three things, which I don't want to mention for the sixth time, but I will. We don't know about 400 and whether we're going to get that $500 million. Costs go up, and the opportunity for ROI. I'll tell you right now, that fifth commissioner is very intelligent. She has a CPA. She is a CPA, and she probably understands this stuff better than the rest of us combined. So I'm telling you to, if we send it back right now, play politics, focus your attention on that one commissioner, because I think you have the argument. So I'll be voting this no, not because I don't trust you, the exact opposite, because I do trust you. You guys have done great work. We haven't already, we haven't always seen eye to eye, but you've done it in good faith. And I never mind being spoken to bluntly. So all you had to do, the only thing you could have ticked me off is by saying, read the syllabus. If I have to hear that, I get mad. But other than that, I greatly, greatly appreciate the work that you guys do. Now, you have to unfortunately play a little politics if this goes down.
All right. I think we have exhausted the spoken word at this point. Commissioner Snardi?
I might as well speak because, you know, everybody else spoke for six hours. I think that's a little insulting to Commissioner Pritchett. I think she has thought about it, and I, I know. And it's okay that Commissioner Tabia is suggesting that members of the COC play politics with members of the commission, but I think Commissioner Pritchett's been around the block once or twice and probably put a lot of thought into it. Not to say anybody can't change their mind, but we go and we say that this is solid, and this is the exact thing we need to do based on a board's recommendation, based on the expertise of that board, but we just shot, that same commissioner argued that we didn't want to take the committee and the TDC's recommendations for their project. So to each his own, you know? And I'm just going to leave it at that and just say that, you know, there's nothing wrong with allocating because, again, how many times have we reallocated monies that were not starting to be spent? So we can, if you've got a better project, bring it. But not allocating that money, there's no harm in that either. Because some of those projects aren't even projected to start for a couple of years. So I'd like to see that money allocated in those projects, so.
And I would just echo, you know, I said before that I believe we've all done our homework.
And is there a motion in a second?
There is.
Let's just call the question.
All right. We'll go ahead and call the question at this point.
We've been talking about this way too long.
So the motion on the table, as I understand it, just to restate and confirm, is to send this to the COC, basically a request asking that they come back to us with proposals for the unallocated funds.
Their recommendations.
Their recommendations for use of the unallocated funds. That was the motion that was seconded. You all on board? Perfect. All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. We have the two on either extreme commissioners, Tabia and Commissioner Smith, in the nay and the opposition opposed, and the three in the center, four, so passes 3-2.
I need to pick a T-shirt. Dang it.
You need to get a Voting Buddies T-shirt again? I need to make a motion to prohibit Commissioner Tabia from creating a Voting Buddies T-shirt.
Commissioner Tabia insults you in one breath, and then is your best friend in the next. You can't make it up.
All right.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? I'm sorry. Just, I know it's late.
Yes, ma'am.
But I really wanted to share with the community the success and the progress we've made so far. I had a whole bunch of slides, which obviously, you know, it's late, but I did want to say we've completed 22 projects. We have 20 that are under construction right now.
Virginia, if you want to, I mean, you've waited all this time.
No, that's okay. I just, if I can have a couple sentences.
Sure.
And then I'll work with Don Walker on a press release, and I can send you the slides. We have 34 projects that are in design and permitting right now, so that, and they add up to the $250 million-ish that are, you know, projects we're moving forward, even though we haven't collected that much yet. We have analyzed state data collected from the Indian River Lagoon, and the water is statistically cleaner now than it was when we started. We are beginning to see progress. I know multiple ones of you have asked at different times, how do we, you know, when will we see progress? How will we know if this work is working? And so we have been at this long enough that we are finally seeing those signs of success. And then just to summarize, with the adoption approval of the 2020 plan, with or without the 6 million, this total shift from MUC to human waste-related projects, the percent allocation in the original 2016 plan was 65% to MUC. It is now 27%, so less than half of what it was originally. And wastewater has nearly doubled from 27 million to 45, 27% to 45%. So with that overview, I will.
All right. Positive note, I like that. So thank you and your staff and everyone that's been involved in the process at all the different levels. We're going to move on to public comment. There are no more public comment cards, which is good, given that it's 8:44 at night. Board reports.
No report.
The strange-looking Mr. Abate this time.
No report.
All right. Ms. Bentley?
No report.
At least you look like yourself. Commissioner Pritchett? Commissioner Tabia?
No report.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I have a request. As you know, I'm now the IRL appointee for this board on the Indian River Lagoon Council. But we don't have a, we don't have an alternate. So we need an alternate. So.
I'd be glad to.
All right. It sounds like we have a, we have a motion from Commissioner Pritchett. A second from Commissioner Tabia, and hopefully, this will be unanimous, all in favor of appointing Commissioner Pritchett as the alternate on the IRL council. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thankfully, something that wasn't contentious. 5-0, congratulations.
I'll go aboard.
Commissioner Snardi?
Yes, real quickly.
Please.
Commissioner Anderson on Palm Bay City Council requested that his council allow him to kind of be a liaison to try to get this intersection open, like get the county, you know, through negotiation. And I think he even mentioned Mr. Denninghoff and Suzanne Sherman, as, just as kind of like to have a few of us from each side of it, and I just wanted to get the board's approval. I mean, obviously, I'm going to always defer to Mr. Denninghoff's recommendation based on his history and based on the email that he sent out, but just if they need a commissioner in those meetings or to help, you know, I guess with it, are you guys okay with that?
I'll do one better. I've already made a couple comments publicly with folks that asked me that if he were to get together with you, that might be a good way of proceeding. So I'm totally happy with it.
Well, he reached out to me and asked, and I told him that I would have to check with Commissioner Tabia and the board to make sure that that was okay. Because that intersection actually is both of ours. And I know the city of Palm Bay went and met with Mr., or Commissioner Tabia, but I don't know.
Any objections? Speak now or forever hold your peace?
No objection.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I think you've got at least a lack of objections, so go for it.
And I can promise you, I'm not going to make it political. I just want to get it done. I want to get that roadway open.
And I trust that he's the same way, too. I've had some interactions with him on a couple different committees.
He is. He truly is.
And I can tell you, I think he means well.
Well, when he brought it, when he brought it up to his council, they were, they were pretty awful to him, but they relented and allowed him to negotiate, made it very clear that they weren't going to, you know, he wasn't negotiating on their behalf and had to come back to the board, which goes without saying. But I think at least this, as a county, we want to see this road open as badly as our residents want it open, and it should have been open a long time ago.
I can tell you that, you know, even, I think it was the last TPO or maybe two TPO meetings prior, I sat next to him, and neither of us were happy about the lack of momentum with respect to that, and I think this is a good move.
And I just have two questions for Mr. Denninghoff. Mr. Denninghoff, was that 1.5 million ever allocated toward that intersection officially?
No.
Okay. And also, too, the city of Palm Bay chose to put it at that, they chose to move that intersection from McCo Road to this current intersection, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's it.
And I do have a quick question on that as well, because there's been some suggestion by, it doesn't matter by whom, by someone in that neck of the woods, that we essentially told them the only option for them was to take over the intersection, essentially, we weren't willing to.
No, all of Babcock. They, they told them.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
We told them they had to take over the entirety of Babcock.
That's not correct.
And the entirety of Babcock's, not the county's. All right?
That's also correct.
Thank you.
All right. So that'll end up, I'm sure, on social media.
It's so bad, we use John for like facts. You know, he's like a computer. He's like Google, except.
But he's pretty good.
Except with a degree in history, right?
You know, the good thing is with an engineer, unlike a lawyer, you sometimes can't just get no.
Well, he's not political. That's what's great about him, is that you're going to get the straight answer.
You ask Eden, or you ask Frank, or you ask me, or you ask Jerry, it's, well, it depends.
Yes. John's an engineer, so it's black or it's white.
Yeah. I respect that. I appreciate it. All right.